Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 1st, 2025. And I ask that you please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, the weather makes us ever thankful for the outstanding staffs that we have within our community who are here night and day when the need arises to take care of us and provides public safety and transportation exercises. And Batavia is very, very fortunate to have those men and women working in our community to do this for us. We ask tonight for vision and understanding on the part of the city council as they go about the items of business before them, knowing in the hearts and minds of each of them, they are here to do what is in the very best interest of Batavia and its future. And as always, we want to ask for a special blessing tonight on those who are serving our country on foreign soil in defense of our liberties. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each and every one of them as they go about their vital missions. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Absent.
Lowman?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Farrenbach?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thank you, Attorney Record. We have a necessary quorum to conduct business. Okay, moving to item four, reminders for those who are going to address us tonight. Would you please come forward and use the mic as this meeting is being recorded on TV? And if you don't use the mic, your people are not going to be able to hear what you have to say. Moving to item five, items to be removed, added or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? All right, and moving then to the consent agenda. Item accept and place on file, the Committee of the Whole Minutes for the November 10th, 2025 Special Meeting.
Your Honor, do you want me to read it?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No worries. Accept and place on file, Committee of the Whole Minutes, November 10th, 2025, Special Meeting. Approvals. Payroll fund totals for 11/21/2025 in the amount of $1,122,452.29. Accounts payable, check register, in the amount of $3,486,890.14. City Council Minutes, November 17th, 2025. Cow Executive Session Minutes, November 3rd, 2025, Special Meeting. Land Acquisition, Sale and Purchase of Electricity. City Council Executive Session Minutes, November 10th, 2025, Collective Bargaining. Resolution 2025-135-R, 2026 AID Social Worker. Resolution 2025-138-R, Authorizing Execution of a Sidewalk Easement with Batavia Enterprise Inc. for the Flynn Street Sidewalk. Resolution 2025-134-R, Authorizing IGA with King County for 2026 Green Program Funding. Resolution 2025-136-R, Authorizing Microsoft Copilot AI Subscription. An Ordnance 2025-67, Annexing Properties on Wagner Road. Your Honor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as read.
Okay. Have a motion second for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Yes, I guess.
I'm here on the last item, Consent Agenda 6.11. I believe I have understanding with Mr. Boining today that there will be a letter issued by the City of Batavia in connection with this ordinance. I thank Mr. Boining and the Fire Chief for being immediately responsive to our concerns that were expressed last week. That's all I have. Thank you.
I thank you. Anybody else? Clerk, call the roll then.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Absent.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farrenbach?
I think I'll curse myself for this one.
Thank you. Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Twelve yes, one abstention, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to seven, on matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Does anybody want to speak? All right. Council have anything? All right, moving to eight, Chamber of Commerce. Margaret?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I have quite a few things to talk about that are wonderful. First of all, I want to announce that the previous Citizens of the Year got together last month and selected the 2025 Citizen of the Year. If you haven't heard yet, it is Linda Shalke. Well deserved. Linda, she is just so deserving. Her decades of service, leadership, and unwavering dedication to the Batavia community are so evident. As a previous Citizen of the Year, Marge Brown says, "Linda has dedicated herself to the betterment of our community, not in search of recognition, but through an unwavering, hands-on commitment to improving our city's culture and spirit. Linda embodies the very best of Batavia's community spirit. We're so excited to celebrate her." We will also be announcing, or we have also announced, the press release has gone out, that the Batavia Women's Club was selected as a Spirit of Batavia awardee for the 2025 Spirit of Batavia Award. The Women's Club's initiatives span education and literacy, environmental efforts, family support, and social issues. When they hear of a need at the Batavia Women's Club, they step up and they respond. They truly deserve this honor. We look forward to celebrating these individuals and organizations at the Inspire Celebration. We invite you to come. Please mark your calendar for Thursday, April 23rd, 2026, at Revelry 675. We also have the great news to announce that in just seven days, we went through and distributed our holiday bucks. That's the $5,000 that the Chamber donates in matching funds. So that's $10,000 that goes into our local businesses. So that's a new record that went flying off the shelves. We're very proud of that. That's one of our Board's beloved initiatives to support local businesses and give a treat to the residents. The 2025 State of the Community Breakfast that we did last month, thank you Mayor for presenting on the past and the future of great things in Batavia. We also had Superintendent Tom Kim from the Batavia School District, Allison Niemela, the Executive Director of the Batavia Park District, and Josephine Tucci, Executive Director of the Batavia Public Library, present on their strategic plans. And we've gotten great feedback about the program, so we'll continue to do that. If you missed it and weren't able to attend, it is on BATV, so you could go back and watch it. Last month, we partnered with the Batavia School District and coordinated women in business, professionals in our community to go to the high school to present to females that are between ninth and 12th grade, of course, at the high school level, who want to know more about careers in business. So we had wonderful mentors, some that are at this table, that talked to the Batavia students to inspire them to, of what they can do in the future in business, and hopefully then maybe open a business back here in Batavia. I'd like to highlight an upcoming event. It's our Batavia Women in Business Holiday Luncheon. It will be on Thursday, December 11th, at Tyson Cuisine at 11:30. Each year, the Chamber's Batavia Women in Business Committee collects items and funds for the Batavia Toy Access Drive and Batavia United Ways Adopt a Family. So please consider, I'm asking you to consider donating new and unopened toys and gift cards at the event, or drop them off in advance at the Batavia Chamber office. This is a great holiday event, fun to go to, but a great way to contribute to those in need in our community. So come and kick off the holidays with us on December 11th. Regarding ribbon cuttings, we've had 34 ribbon cuttings this year alone already, but we're not done. We are celebrating Earthmover Credit Union's ribbon cutting and grand opening next, on Tuesday, December 17th. That was the new building that they built right off Randall there behind Starbucks. So we're so happy to have them. That will be at 2:00 PM. The Chamber will continue providing our educational programs on topics that businesses need. We are hosting our annual employment law update webinar this Wednesday, December 4th, at 10:30. You could register online for that. We continue providing our relationship building that our businesses need. We have our holiday networking at Kay Hollis Jewelers on Wednesday, December 10th, at 4:30. We continue to support our businesses by spotlighting them and bringing in new customers. Join us for our Out to Lunch with the Batavia Chamber at Aqua Viva Restaurante. Drop in and join us on December 19th at noon. And for additional details about events, please go to our website, bataviachamber.org. Before I introduce my esteemed guest, does anybody have any questions for me? Great. We will continue with the momentum into the new year. We're excited about what's going on here with the Chamber in Batavia. Now, I would like to introduce Debbie Mudd. She is the owner and marketing lead for Valor Carts, a local business with a showroom on Reddent Road. Valor Carts specializes in customized golf carts. So please help me welcome Debbie Mudd. Thanks, Margaret. You're welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Shalke, Council members. My name is Debbie Mudd, and I represent Valor Carts, family-owned and based here in Batavia. Thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to talk about Valor Carts and introduce the company we own. How we started, yeah. So my husband, my son-in-law, and my oldest son, they have been talking about a business like we have today for quite some time. And that is because my son-in-law used to have a business like this when he was living in Atlanta, Georgia. And ever since he met our daughter, he was talking, saying, "Hey, guys, we should start a business like this here in Batavia." And both my husband and my son, they were into it, but never actually started until February of this year, because then my husband, he had an idea also, not just a golf cart, but also like golf carts for the police force. So that was his idea, like a golf cart for police, really get into the crowd, for festivals, events, et cetera. And then my son-in-law said, "Yes, okay, this is it. We should do it." So the next day, my husband said, "Okay, we're starting a business in low-speed vehicles slash golf carts, 100% electric." And I said, "Oh, yeah, well, that's fun, right? Tell me more about it." And then I got actually excited too. And I thought, "Okay, you have the police cart, but what about a recreational cart? Like a cart that is fun for families to drive, to build memories, to enjoy the outdoors in a different way?" And being from Holland, I came to the United States 10 years ago, Holland, the country of the windmills, I'm so happy that we found a place here in Batavia. So the recreational carts, our lineup, we have two, four, and six-seaters. Like I said, 100% electric. And we also have, the 2026 model will also be an all-wheel drive. Because when we introduced the 2025 models, like I said, we only started in April of this year. Over summer, we have been all over the place with our carts, just to get the name out. We've been to fairs, golf outings, parades, everywhere. And then we got so much feedback, because like all the events we went to, we were just asking for feedback. And one of the things was, "Please, an all-wheel drive." So for the 2026 models, we will make sure we have that all-wheel drive for our customers. Still, with all the advanced features, so the LED display, the street legal package, because safety first, it's the same as when you go in your car. The first thing you do, you put your seatbelts on. It's the same in our carts. So it has the street legal package, Apple CarPlay, the lithium battery. And for the police cart, the police cart is fully equipped with lights, sirens, PA system, even the department branding can be put on the cart. And for the police cart, it has been used by 15 different police departments around Batavia, and we did get a lot of feedback on that as well. So the 2026 model has all the advanced techniques. I believe we even have like a drone charger now. So that will be fun. Our customers so far, mainly families, like cabins up north, North Wisconsin, Northern Michigan, having a cabin there, go there over the summer and build memories, go to the lake, go into town, have a drink. Also, people living in subdivisions where it's allowed to drive a cart like ours, people with huge property to go from A to B on their own property, and 55-plus communities. Those are the people that we serve. But we, basically, we say, "You tell us the cart you're looking for, and we will build it." We design, we assemble, and we sell the carts right here in Batavia. So for looking forward 2026, I think we keep doing what we're doing. We love it. We have been meeting with so many different kind of people. We have been selling the carts that people were really looking for and enjoy riding. And also, looking forward, we did partner up with Rising Lights, and we have, we had such a fun time driving them around in the garden. And I'm already looking forward to next summer. You cannot even think about it with the snow like we have now, but we cannot wait for the next summer. Also, creating jobs. Like I said, we started small, but we're already growing. So I actually have seasonal part-time and full-time jobs available. And I would like to invite you all to come to the shop, even if you're not in for buying a golf cart, but just see what we are doing here right in Batavia. Please visit our website, www.vallercarts.com, or even better, call 708-934-9349 to make an appointment. We are looking forward to meet you, see you at the shop, and see if we can start designing the cart for you. Thank you for your time. Have a nice evening, have a good meeting, and wish you a happy holiday season.
Well, thank you for choosing Batavia to set up this very unique and promising business. So we're honored to have you here in our community doing that.
Yeah.
I think you should share, can you share the address of your plant? You mentioned it, but you didn't give words.
Yeah, so it's 851 North Reddent Road in Batavia.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Margaret, you done with your?
I do have one thing to add. Thank you for asking. We are doing a Cloak and Commerce, a networking, morning networking at Valor Carts in April, so when the weather's a little bit nicer. So if you wanted to, or come, if you can't do it before that, come join us in April. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving to the regular agenda. Presentation by BATAC Quarterly Update.
I'm Mr. Matt, the co-chair of the Batavia Active Transportation Advisory Commission, or just the Transport Commission for those who don't want to use too many words. I should start by saying, Mr. Mayor, that you've made me realize the city has another opportunity for raising revenue, because we both attended the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning Hundred Years Plan gig a little while ago in Chicago. And the two longest lines were one for the cloakroom and one to get photos with our mayor. And I realized, since the glitterati of Chicagoland were all there, that perhaps we should set up a photo booth at public functions and charge 10 bucks, and we could increase some revenue for the city. But that event was very important, and I'll mention that a little later on in the Northern Illinois Transit Authority, which I think is a big move for Chicagoland. And we need to make sure as a city that we don't miss the bus when it comes to getting some improvements out of that organization. I'd like to introduce Lance Garrison, who will speak after me to introduce himself, and hopefully, Mayor, you will endorse him to be your replacement member on the commission, since you stole our wonderful Bob, who was Secretary of our commission to be on this august body. And we just wanted to place on record our sincere thanks for you, Bob, for doing that secretarial role. It does mean all of the commission have now been serving for less than 12 months, which it's always good to have some renewal. But we have found our feet, and I think now we're diligently making progress at a quicker rate. We're doing a number of things in terms of community engagement. We've done a number of gigs in the Fire Day, Fire Station Open Day, concerts in the park, the 70s Night was an enjoyable one. We've got a number of items that are well-branded for Batavia cities and make sure we build on the great work that the council staff do in branding this city, such as safety lights for cyclists, which the kids love, and a few other items like repair kits for puncture, repair kits. And we engage with the community and talk to them about the importance for the infrastructure, both cycling and walking in our city, and how this city does prioritize it. And many other cities don't even have a commission like we do. Secondly, I'd like to call for us, I know the budget's off the record, not being discussed tonight, but we would like to see a modest improvement in works budget, and in particular, the percentage allocated to walking and cycling infrastructure. What we do know from research across the country is that between 13% and 18% increase in property value can be derived from good cycling and walking infrastructure in neighborhoods. Exact same house, a few streets away from that sort of infrastructure, worth 15% to 18% less. The higher the property value, the more taxes this council raises. Having a separation is also for safety, for that cycling lane is really important. Painting's a start, but we'd love to see some improvements in relation to speed bumps that separate, especially at corners when cars cut corners and cyclists can get hit. In the coming strategic plan, which moves me on to the strategic plan, we have for the city, and we've been working through that with council staff, who've been excellent, Mayor, as you know, and I know you give them credit often. But they have been great in working with us diligently. You know, Monday night, we even missed a Bears match, which, you know, in previous years may have been a good way of managing the pain. But in this year, we're actually seeing them win. So the staff had to miss a Bears match to sit down and go through line by line the works that you have on the books in relation to walking and cycling, so that we can try to prioritize those ones that give us the most bang for our buck, the ones that help most people. So what we're trying to do is make sure our network from attractors and distributors, such as schools, downtown businesses, you know, and Randall Road allows people to get to and from with that choice of walking, cycling, if they didn't want to use the car. And to do that, they need to be funded and finished. So we're trying to prioritize those that help the most number of people be able to get to the most critical facilities and services that they wish to reach. And that brings me to NITA, the Northern Illinois Transit Authority. And I know, Mayor, as you serve on the Pace Bus Board, you'll be involved, those boards still exist. I did a lot of lobbying in relation to this, and just in my personal life, I put together the Southeast Queensland Regional Plan, which included TransLink, set up a transit authority, one ticket for the largest geographic area under one public transport ticket in the world at the time. We're missing that opportunity straight off, but you take what you can get out of Springfield, as I'm sure we all know. And what we did get is a better coordination, because what, you know, what we really do need to do is make it look like a system for the user, not for the, not for the people who run it, or the people who drive it, or the people who own it, but the people who want to use it, so that it looks like a system that can get them from here to Geneva Train Station, to the city, back out in an efficient and convenient way with one ticket and coordinate it. I mean, I have a choice of one bus, and then it's an hour and 38 minutes until the next bus to get me to Geneva's train station to get me into town to go to work. Penrith in Sydney is exactly 40 miles, about the distance of Batavia from the center of Sydney. There are 28 bus services in an hour. There are 18 train services in an hour, and the train takes about 28 minutes less than the train does from Geneva to get into town. So we have room for improvement, and I'm hoping that our commission can play a role, because every public transport trip starts or finishes with a walk. And, you know, by us engaging with others on these topics, hopefully, we can make sure that Batavia can cash in on what will be, I think, a brighter, better future for public transit in the Chicagoland region. I'm happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Any questions?
Yeah, first off, thank you for all you're doing. It sounds like we're doing some great work, and I'm really excited with the Active Transportation Commission, where you guys are headed. First off, as you may be aware from our retreat over the summer, we had to put off some items, one of them being traffic calming. And I know that's coming up on an agenda maybe after the budget, but I know I would at least be really interested in hearing what are some ways that you all believe we can address traffic and traffic calming. That should be coming up, maybe after the New Year, I don't know, after the New Year or something. But that was an item we put off from our retreat that we are calling back up on, and I know you guys think closely about that. And it's also really kind of exciting with the Northern Illinois Transit Authority coming through. NITA, is that how we're saying it? Is that what the parlance says these days? Yeah, and it would be sort of fascinating to think more. I know some council members have been thinking about it. Dustin had mentioned it previously. There are ways that we can maybe leverage that. And so I'm particularly interested in hearing more ideas on how we can leverage this new legislation to make our town a little better, right? To get folks who want to head up to the city. So those are some things that, at least myself, and I hope other council members are reaching out to you about, to get some ideas on. So thank you.
Thank you. Traffic calming is an amazing tool in the toolbox, by the way.
Wonderful, thank you.
Alderman, Beck?
Do you or staff know off the top of your head how much we have in the current budget earmarked for our bike and ped plan, and how much of an increase you would like to see?
Yes, we budget $300,000 per year, so we expect to spend $3 million over the 10-year plan.
And in terms of priorities of what you see pressing for the next year, what would you, if you had a magic wand, like to see?
I think there's some projects that we've been working with staff on that we would like to see brought forward, that we think are probably a higher priority than others. I mean, you've just finished the sidewalk, I keep calling it footpaths, sidewalk in Van Naughtwick, and that's really changed, you know, an entire block, city block there, and the people the other side of it, because it's much easier for kids to get to that school now because of that being finished on there. And so there's the projects like that, and sort of what I think we call missing links, small links that link up where there is already good infrastructure either side of it, but there's just this missing link that makes it less attractive, especially in weather like this, to use that walking option because of that missing link. So trying to prioritize those over perhaps, you know, ones that may just assist, you know, 10 homes well away from the infrastructure, trying to prioritize where we get most bang for our buck is what we've been running through and trying to do. We also are keen to see us go from bronze to silver in the Bicycle American League ratings as a city. Cities like Evanston are silver. And to get there, we do need to see a larger percentage of the overall works budget that's used on roads to be used on cycling and pedestrian infrastructure. And that will also help us accelerate the finishing of a network, which, you know, it's just really important to make sure you've got network for most people to get to most places that they want to go. Then you can work on the nice things, you know, the pleasant things, the bells and whistles that make it even greater as a city. You know, the River Trail is fantastic, but it doesn't really take a lot of people to or from school, or to or from the shops, or to or from work. It does some, and it's a fantastic resource, but it's more recreational rather than being offered as a way of both getting, you know, healthy, sustainable way of traveling, but giving people the option of doing that healthy or sustainable way of traveling.
I would like to add that we also have our $100,000 a year sidewalk program that we have included in this. And over the last few years that this has been implemented, as we were doing our street program, we're looking at the list, and they're prioritized 1 through 10. But if we're working in that area, we're doing those streets because it makes most sense. sense to be there while we're doing that. So we are shifting as we go through things, and we do have a complete streets policy, which does require you to, when we reconstruct a street, to have the IDOT standard with the bike lanes and stuff like that. So any federal funding that we do apply for, it's kind of imperative that that's on there. We will be working on Hubbard out in the industrial park, and that is going to have a bike facility on that as well. We're going to start Phase 1 this next year. So, yeah, and then we also have gotten Safe Routes to School grants, which we completed one this year with Republic and Webster and Blaine Street. And then we also have another grant that we received, and we're going to start with a public meeting shortly for off of Blue Stem and Chilum and Willow over there, off of just east of Red Ant. So that will help connect the kids to the middle school. And we do work on those pieces of missing links, and it just depends if some of them are developer, if they're able to be put in by a developer at one point. We may wait and look at other priorities. Some of them are engineering struggles, and there's easier ones. So we sometimes pick the low-hanging fruit, as opposed to installing retaining walls and stuff like that. But they're all being looked at and assessed and figured out when we can get them in the plan.
Andrea, can you clarify, is the $100,000 included in that $300,000, or it's a total of $400,000?
It's completely different. There's three different parts of the bike and ped plan. I had the chart up. It is the, it's a sidewalk, then there's the striping, and then intersection improvement. So there's a whole bunch of matrices that Tim will talk about later, that all of those each have roughly $100,000 budgeted each year. So those three compiled at $300,000.
And then when we get the federal or state grants that adds to that bucket, it doesn't replace any of that $300,000 that we committed to, correct?
Correct. We work the numbers. Sometimes we will use $100,000 for the sidewalk program and contribute that towards the new sidewalk for that year. We just have, and some of it, depending if we're using MFT funding for part of that street, we might use some of that. It just depends on where the location is.
Anybody else?
Can we get a reply on the League of Bicycleists massive city that we all submitted back in June?
Very good question, Bob. This was not a setup. Yeah, no, we haven't heard back yet. A great deal of work went into that, and the city staff did an enormous amount of work, and some of us contributed small bits along the way in riding tasks, but we haven't heard back from them yet. We're hoping to retain the bronze status, and that's in place then for a few years, isn't it? And it's that few years' time that we're already thinking about, how do we get to silver status? I mean, I've seen some research showing that about 22% of people really look at that walkability and cycle infrastructure when they are choosing a place to live. And now not everyone is in the office every day. There's many, you know, an AI is going to replace us all. There will be more time to be able to, you know, move around and live where you wish to live. And it's really key, I think, to a lot of people about being able to move around without having to just use a car and enjoy their neighborhoods and enjoy their community, and, you know, they're the community members. I had a person walk past with their dog as I was trying to shovel the snow, because my snow blower worked perfectly in summer, but is on the blink, pulled up, came back, you know, with his own blower, pulled it out of a car and just did the driveway for me. You know, that's the sort of community we've got, and we just want to build on it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
A question about the budget. You mentioned that you wanted to see a modest increase. Is that to the $300,000 that is currently budgeted? Do you have an idea of what that increase would look like? What were you thinking when you said that?
I think above inflation. It's what we would be trying to target. So, I mean, you know, we'd be looking, you know, at 10%, hopefully, and then within the allocation of it, I think it's currently, Tim, you want to correct me, about, we worked out about 18% of the works budget overall is used for walking and cycling projects?
I think that's about right.
Off the top of my head. If we can get that above 20, then that really puts us in the Silver League status. And it actually means, you know, it can make a big difference, because, you know, compared to roads, this infrastructure is cheap as chips and has a real impact on the communities where they are. And I think if you are being frugal, which this council is, and thinking of the future and making sure you're fiscally responsible by putting up taxes, which no one wants to see, a really visible way for the city to see the improvements those taxes are going towards is seeing walking and cycling improving in their community.
Anybody else? Thank you for coming down. Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, the new member of the commission, Lance Garrison.
Item 92 is the appointment of Lance Garrison to the Bicycle Commission for a three-year term expiring in 9/1928.
Hi, I'm Lance Garrison. I'm hoping to join the commission. As you just saw from the presentation of my colleague Liam, I think we're doing really exciting work. We have a lot of great ideas coming up. I have lived in Batavia most of my life. I grew up here, and more specifically, I grew up on the bike trails. When I was in middle school, me and my friend Bob, we were just outside this building for the opening of what is now known as the Hope Bridge, and our goal was to be the first bicycles across the Hope Bridge. That's how much cycling infrastructure meant to me then, and it still means that much to me now. And I'd like to serve the commission and uphold the legacy and vision of Philip Belfstrom, who saw cycling and cycling commuting as a great thing and something that this area should have.
Why don't you just stand there for a moment? I would ask for a motion for the approval of Lance Garrison to be a member of the Batavia Commission. Motion and second. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Thank you.
Aye. Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
Congratulations. You just made it. You're the first person, I think, I've ever done that stood at the podium while the council voted on your appointment. I don't know if we started something or not, but that's a new way of doing this, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right. 93 is the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Project Update.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me some time to present tonight. This is perfect timing because of the nice job that the Bike Commission did presenting on their updates. I'd like to present some of the projects that engineering's been working on over the last couple, two or three years, projects that were included in the Bicycle and Ped Plan. Hopefully, everyone saw that memo. I sent it late. I sent it earlier today. But the memo included a list of all the projects that were included in the 2023 Bike and Ped Plan. If you take a look at that, there's probably over, let me see, 87 projects that are supposed to be completed between 2023 and 2033. So in that list is several of the projects that we started working on in 2023. And let me back up a little bit. I'm going to show you like an overall view of all of the bike and ped projects that we've been working on. A lot of these projects, if you look at the list, the ones that are highlighted in blue, they're projects 1, 3, 5, and 7. They're downtown projects you're all familiar with. One, for example, is just a high-vis crosswalk that we did in between Walgreens and then the McDonald's. And then number 3, this is the one-way construction project that we did on North River Street. But as you can see, lots of projects all over the city that we've been working on. Like Andrea was saying, we try to get these projects where they're in conjunction with our streets program. It's efficient for us to include this work with a contractor that's got good pricing for us, so that's kind of what we work to do. Let's see, so I'm just going to skip around. I'll try to be brief here. I just wanted to show you some of the projects we've been working on. As you can see from the list, the numbered locations are matched the locations in the list. Let's skip around. Andrea mentioned this was a big project that we worked on. Number 9 was the Safe Routes to School project along Republic. Fantastic project, because there was no sidewalk on either side of Republic, and we're very, very close to HC Storm School here. And in the end, it turned out to be a really, it almost looked like the sidewalk belonged there. Very, very nice project for us. Sorry, I'm surfing all over the place. Number 13 is another good example. This was a project that was paid for by Pulte, providing bike lanes from Van Norwick all the way to Stonefield Drive. Also, that was on the Bike and Ped Plan, so something that was paid for by a developer is a great project for us. Just skipping around, and if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me, but one project that, let's see, let me skip here.
Tim, can I add? Number 11 is Millview, which that was done last year on the street program, and we were going to give it a year to see what people's feedback was, and we also had budgetary constraints. I was the one doing the street program, so that's why I kind of wanted to interject. And then we were going to do the south half of that section once we got feedback to see what, if people were in agreement or not. So before we move forward with that section of roadway, we'll be getting feedback from the residents there, because we did restrict parking on one side to get the bike lane and just kind of shifted the whole mindset, but that also was a part of the Bike and Ped Plan.
And another good example of a project that we would like to do in conjunction with our streets program, this stretch would be challenging little piece because of more parking that's along Millview, but something we'll definitely be looking at in particular next to the baseball field. A lot of people like to park along the street there. But yeah, we'll be looking at that project. Another one I think everyone obviously is familiar with, the Road Diet Project. You know, just a great project that we, probably a bigger project that we've worked that's changed the character of the city, and something I think that seems like it's worked out well for the city. Also, in that memo that I provided, there's projects that aren't in the Bike and Ped Plan that we've worked on that also, projects that we've done that maybe people haven't seen or are not aware of. One example is another one as part of the Whining Creek Project. Pulte built a bike path from, connecting a bike path that was along Deer Path Road, along the west side of Branson, continuing up to Thorn, going all the way through the subdivision, and then following the Brayburn Marsh. And they're connecting at the McKee Crossing and then also to Branson Drive on the west side. Neat project, also paid for by Pulte Development, so a nice little project that maybe most people aren't aware of. And then Andrea mentioned other projects that were part of the Safe Routes to School Project. Webster was a nice little project between, it's a new sidewalk between College and then Prairie Street. And then she also mentioned the Safe Routes to School Project on Blaine, which was kind of a nice little sidewalk gap project at the very west end that connects the sidewalk that was at South Harrison to the sidewalk that runs north-south that connects to AGS School. Neat, kind of a nice project that most people aren't aware of. That's most of the projects like around the city. I also wanted to mention projects that we have upcoming. This is a good opportunity, because we are going to have presentations probably coming up in January for three bigger projects. Number 1, finishing up Phase 2 of the Road Diet. We have a consultant on board, and maybe some of you are aware of that. Trans Systems is looking at improving, so we completed the Phase 1 of the Road Diet, restriping the project, changing the lanes. And the second phase is to look at the major pedestrian crossings, starting at Millview and going all the way north to McKee. So how can we improve? We were talking about how do you improve, how do you traffic calming, how do you improve the crossings? So we're looking very closely at Millview, at Morton Street, Union. We're looking at First Street, Houston, and McKee. How do we improve those crossings? With curb bumpouts, what's the best way to do that? So we have a meeting that's hopefully going to be this month. We're waiting to hear back from IDOT, either this month or early in January. And once we have that meeting, we'll get their feedback, and then we'll come back to council with some recommendations. And then number 2, and maybe some of you are familiar with, we've hired Strand and Associates to look at feasibility of building a grade separation project for a crossing at Main and Randall. Neat project, big project, something that we would be working in coordination with KDOT if the project does move forward. Strand and Associates is finishing up their feasibility study, and actually, we're planning on coming to council, I think, at this first meeting in January, to discuss and look at some different alternatives there. And then lastly, Andrea mentioned the Safe Routes to School Project, that we have been awarded funding over, I'm sorry, I'm surfing around here. Hopefully, you're not getting dizzy. Over, let's see if I can find it, further south. Both Willow Lane and Blue Stem, neither of these streets have any sidewalk at all. Those are going to be high priority for us if there's no sidewalk on either side. So we were awarded Safe Routes to School funding for constructing a sidewalk between Chilum and Lexington for both Blue Stem and then Willow. The next step on this project is to meet with the residents and see, get their thoughts, get their feedback on this project and see what they think. And then following that, then we would hire a consultant to do preliminary engineering for them.
Is Willow the one to the west?
Yes.
And Blue Stem is to the east, right?
Yes. This is Blue Stem, or this is Willow.
That's Willow, yeah. Okay.
So another nice project. What I had, if you have any other questions, certainly, you can email me or any questions that you have right now.
Well, thank you for your report tonight.
Your Honor. Have we, up to this point, have we heard any feedback from the residents on Millview with doing the parking on one side?
We have not. I haven't heard anything, at least it's been about a year. I know there was some focal residents that maybe didn't like it so much, but we'll be probably hearing from more once we start on this project again. This is a longer stretch, like I was mentioning. I think this is a little bit more challenging. There's more parking on the street, especially, my kids didn't play baseball, but from what I understand, a lot of people like to park along Millview there, so that would be a little bit more of a challenge. We also have a bump out for a park just west of there on the south side of the road. Just west. There's a park right there. Yes, yep. So there's a bump out for parking there as well. Okay.
Want to move on?
Yeah, first off, thank you for all the hard work. This is great, and I particularly love the visualization. I know it was included in the memo. Is there a way for us to get access and view this more sort of interactive map or some version of it?
I wish I could. You have to have a login for this, so I don't know that I can actually share this.
Okay, yeah, I know that seeing the connectivity maps is really helpful for cyclists and folks walking, and the more we can show the upgrades and, you know, in a map like this where you can sort of see the blue line, oh, now I can go, you know, north-south when I'm farther west, is really helpful. So if we can find a way to make it a little more publicly available, I think would be helpful.
I know King County has recently updated, and maybe you're aware of this, they have a bicycle and pedestrian map. I don't know if you guys are aware, there's actually, I think there's an app.
I was going to ask, isn't there an app or something?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's very helpful, actually.
Yep.
Thank you again. All right. Moving then to 94, which is ordinance 2025-066, conditional use permit for video gaming establishment in the DMU Downtown Mixed Use District, Gammon Coach House at 3 South Batavia Avenue. Who's got this one?
Thank you, Your Honor. We discussed this at length last week at our Committee of the Whole. Gammon Coach House would like to add five video game terminals in their back room. There was a lot of discussion about the state's decision to appeal There was a lot of discussion about the state's decision to appeal or to reverse their decision that they were in violation of state law and our local law, that they are too close to church, to religious institutions, to operate any gaming. I will reiterate what I said last time. I, I don't believe that they are in, they are in violation of our local laws. They are in violation of the state gaming. We do not have any notes from the state as to why they overturned their decision. I don't like loosening our standards for businesses or property owners, as we'll discuss in the next agenda item two. Like I mentioned last time, I, I believe good restaurants are really important to the healthy downtown economy. I think good restaurants are social spaces, our third places are really important to our social fabric here in Batavia. And I look forward to the future discussion that we have about other ways that we can support and build up our downtown economy, not at the expense of our businesses, but in the protection of our residents and in the support of our viability. I know five of us raised our hands to have that conversation, so I'm hoping that will happen here quickly in the, in the new year. I don't know who to direct that question to or how, how things get on the agenda, but I, I just look forward to that happening quickly.
Ms. Solfa?
Yeah, I would point out that I think it might be a bit of a misrepresentation that this is in violation of laws. This has been approved by the Illinois Gaming Commission. I'm sure that the city attorney has reviewed this and decided if it's in compliance with the local laws, and we do have a memo saying it is. We had a discussion last week. Police chief has also reviewed everything and found this to be in compliance with what the requirements are under our ordinance. So with all that said, I think that the, with the fact that it's been approved, that it's been reviewed, that it's been determined to be in compliance with both local and state laws, that this is something that we allow it for other businesses. There's no reason to disallow it here with the fact that they have complied with everything. It's been reviewed, so again, I'm a yes vote on this because I think that there's no reason not to vote yes because they are in compliance with the laws and the ordinances that are established.
Can I ask Chief Lowers to talk about that? Alder Person Solfa said that the police chief was in agreement that they were not in compliance with the state law, or that they are in compliance. Please, Chief Lowers, can you please speak to that and confirm what your stance is as far as how you understand the law?
Sure. And I'll also pass it over to Scott Buning when I'm done speaking because he's got some more information in terms of the zoning requirements and things like that, that they've researched and looked into. I can tell you, when this went to Planning Commission, Police Department voiced two concerns. Our concerns were that we did not believe that it was in compliance with the Video Gaming Act and that it was closer than 100 feet to a school or place of worship. So we believe that it is too close to both Bethany Lutheran Church and to the Congregational Church. The other issue that we voiced was that the, it needed to be under the continuous view of an employee at all times. I did speak with the business owner on that, met him out at his business, talked through different solutions to that, utilizing mirrors, video surveillance systems, things like that. What I can tell you is, my reading of our code is that it is silent on whether or not continuous video monitoring constitutes within view. I believe it does meet the spirit of our ordinance. The other thing that I'll note is, our code deviates from the state law, where our code says the area needs to be within continuous view of an employee, whereas state law says the entrance needs to be within view of an employee. The entrance is within view of an employee, so I think considering that fact, we've been able to kind of wrap our heads around the view issue more so than the proximity to the church issue. You want to talk more about the church, Scott?
Sure. As we said in the staff report to the Plan Commission, I think we're not in agreement with what the state's interpretation of, of the code is. We do not feel that the state made the correct decision on this, but that is what the state has, has made that decision about. We think that it is too close to two churches based on the, the way we determine the way a building is. We don't agree with the way the state determined what the building wall was. And then in addition regarding Bethany, that building is being used for ministry services as well as we understand it. So because of that, that on its face would mean it's not in compliance with the code in regards to setbacks. The state has made their decision. You know, we made our recommendation, the Plan Commission made their recommendation, and obviously, it's up to the council to make that final decision. But that's, that's what we feel in regards to the way the state law was.
What I'm hearing is both city staff and the police chief believe that we are not, this is not in compliance with the state law, right? The, with Batavia's ordinance.
We feel that it does not comply with the statute as it is written. Obviously, the gaming board is the one that makes the final decision on that, and they, they felt differently, and that's, that's why they made that interpretation.
If I could ask the city attorney to just point out that section of the state law and, and how it is worded in terms of where you measure from and to?
Yeah, thank you, Laura. Way the state law is read in the Video Gaming Act, it just is within 100 feet of a church or school. The preschool operated does not count as a school as defined by the Video Gaming Act because school is only defined as a secondary or elementary school, so the preschool wouldn't qualify as that. So we're really looking at the churches and what the going, there's no real definition of churches. Looking at some references going back to Liquor Control Act two, which is similar, that has a similar restriction, they measure by the point of where worship services are and ministry are performed. We have not looked at specifically what all was going on at these churches in the various locations yet. We haven't had that time to do so. Looking at a little bit more of the regulations though, too, under the Video Gaming Act regulations, they determine that the measurement is from the outside wall of the structure containing the licensed video gaming location and the structure containing the place of worship. So that's, that's measured distance that we'll be looking at measuring. It's a, there's some argument that could be made as well, that while this is what the video gaming regulations state, under the Liquor Control Act, it's very specific in the way that has been interpreted is that it's the measurement from the place of worship to the property line. The Video Gaming Act doesn't say that in the actual statute, but the regulations provide some more definition to that. So there's some question in terms of what is the correct outcome here, but of course, the state gaming board has made their determination that this is outside of the 100-foot border of that. Whether or not that's fully accurate or not, there's nothing challenged yet, nothing I can say that that's wrong, but there's a different way of viewing it than what the state gaming board has looked at.
One more.
Yeah. I apologize, I wasn't able to be here yesterday, but I did watch the videos and the discussion that was had. The, as you know, I've, I've been opposed to video gaming in town, and again, I'll reiterate, not for moral reasons, but for, I don't think that's the image you want for Batavia. And I've been saying that for years now, and lo and behold, here we are. It continues to grow and grow. Even the storefront, you know, video gaming that you, you warned us about, Mayor, we now have that. We now have that. That's, you walk by there, you see the video games in a storefront. So with this, and I, and I will disclose, I am a member of the Congregational Church, and I can tell you that that building there, the nursery school, is also used for ministry. In fact, the youth group meets in that building, or in that, in the, in the nursery downstairs of the Batavia Nursery Building. The playground for the preschool students, okay, I understand that the, the law doesn't include preschool. I would think that's a pretty, you know, it's a decades-old preschool that's been there. The playground is even closer to the, that establishment. It's out the, on the north, that'd be the northwest corner of the building is the playground where the children are out there every day, weather permitting. Our, our children have spent countless hours in that youth room there. There, there is worship that goes on in there. And so to say, oh, well, there's a technicality, I hear, you know, well, we're bending our standards, we're, you know, why, why have rules when we can use technicalities to, you know, you know, technicalities can get around them? I thought this, the reason we have schools and churches is to, for some protection and to, clearly, this is with, I mean, literally, I could see if it's one, but sandwiched between two churches, a school, and, you know, that's, I find that, you know, unacceptable. And so I, I do not support this, just as I have not supported any expansion of gaming, and I'm glad to see that we're going to have a further discussion on this. But let me tell you, when we start, first started, when we passed this, there was, it was, we were always a divided council on this. Mayor, I think you voted several times to break ties on this issue. I would say that's been the, the biggest issue that has divided this council. And, you know, I, I can't support it because this is just going against what the spirit of what our rules are, was to keep it away from, from schools and children. And there are children within 100 feet of there, even to the firewall. So I do not support this, and I urge the council to reconsider this. It also, you know, we even heard from our attorney, they haven't, haven't done proper measurements, haven't done the proper vetting to know what happens in those parts of the building. They're relying solely on what another paid attorney who's going, you know, supporting their clients to get them what they want, to go against our ordinance. And so I adamantly oppose this, and I encourage everyone else to oppose this.
One more.
I believe Alderman Farinbach was first. I'll defer to him first, then follow up.
Yeah. So thank you for the commentary. Just new guy in the block, right? So I've been here for six months. My personal take on gambling is, I agree with the sentiment that not necessarily required here from the GATCO, but it's here now, right? So the market's been saturated. And being at competitive disadvantage is a real thing now at this point. Unfortunately, we got here, but we're here. So what is bothering me is that we're at this, we're now at the vote time. We've talked about this for hours now, and we're still, I still can't get a straight answer. Is this legal or not? And that's what I need to hear from the city attorney. So if, if this were to pass tonight, is there any possibility of anyone coming back saying what Batavia just passed is, is against the code for the state?
According to the ordinance, so long as the location complies with Section 25H of the Video Gaming Act, which basically says the 100 feet away from schools, it can be granted a license. At this point, with the state gaming board finding that it is 100 feet away from the church, that would make it at least compliant with our own ordinances in the fact that you could pass it tonight, and I don't think anybody would be able to kind of come back and contest that based upon the finding, unless they were also going to contest the state board's finding as well, that it was erroneous application of the law. Because I have not actually seen the gaming board ruling. All I read is from the memo, and I think they measured from an interior firewall that separated two buildings, and I don't know if that's a proper application of law, if it were to get further judicial review or not. So as we stand, yes, they are compliant with our ordinance. However, that's not, I don't know if anybody would contest that later on.
So if this were to pass tonight, I'm assuming that means no advertising outside of the building for gambling. I'm assuming that means as originally approved, the gambling stays in dedicated room outside the dining area and the bar area. All that still applies, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And the building hours of operation can't change either, correct?
Correct, yeah. The only real issues we, I see from the city's perspective is whether or not it is the 100 feet away from the churches and whether or not the conditions that the city is willing to work with, with the police department in terms of the video monitoring instead of direct observation of the area by employees absent the video monitoring. Those are the two areas of concern, whether or not this location complies with the current ordinance as it's written.
One more.
Yeah. Thank you for the, the discussion here, and what I'm hearing is, first off, the chief of police has some serious questions about this, our director of zoning has some serious questions about this, and the city attorney has shared that there are questions here. It sounds like there's just one big giant question mark hanging over all of this, right? Jim just asked, I'm sorry, Alderman Farinbach just asked, if we pass this, could it be overturned? And the answer was maybe, right? That there are, would be grounds maybe to go. The flip side may also be true, right? If we don't pass it, we are still within our rights as a council. Are we able to vote no today and still be within the spirit of our ordinance, given that we don't believe it's outside of, or some of us don't believe that it's outside 100 feet, that we aren't sure if the view question is on there? Let me ask this in lawyer speak. Is this a shall issue situation?
No, it's a conditional use issue. The city can approve or not approve the conditional use.
Okay, great. So what I'm hearing is that to be responsible, prudent members of this council, I think it's important that we at least return this back to the Planning Commission. One of the key points in the Planning Commission's memo to us was that they were measuring from a position where services were not being held. If you reread their memo, they determined that by Google. They Googled it and figured out that services were not being held in the spot they measured from. Alderman Malley has shared with us that he goes to that church, and being somebody in there knows that services do occur from the point that they measured from. Google thinks I'm talking to it at the moment. We have also received recent emails from members of both churches stating that they disagree. They do, they do hold services from the position that was being measured from. And so at the very least, we need to send this back to the Planning Commission to really dive deep into this. Does this meet our ordinance? From where I'm sitting, it looks like no. I imagine for some of you, it looks like yes. And because of that disagreement, I think it's important that we refer this matter back to the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission spends a lot of time with the city attorney, with the police chief, and with the zoning director to really get to the bottom of this. Because if we issue it, it's harder to go back from it if we get it wrong. Whereas if we wait a little bit, return it to the Planning Commission, we can gather the information, get the ideas of are we in compliance or not, and make a wise, informed decision. I'll be making a motion to that effect in a little bit, but I'm going to hold off till further comment occurs.
Yeah, I just want to say that I support, taking that back to the Planning Commission, I was able to speak with both pastors, Pastor Jeff from the Bethany Lutheran Church and Pastor Paige from the Congregational Church of Batavia. As mentioned before, you know, I want to hear from people that are directly impacted and see how they felt, and I was disheartened to hear that both of them feel that, they were surprised that this is, at this point in the process, up to vote. They thought that last year, when they were denied, when Gammon was denied this license, that it was taken care of because they were within the 100 feet of a school and a place of worship. So they were surprised that this is going on right now. Unfortunately, they were, they were not able to come today, but as mentioned, some emails came through. And when I spoke with them, they mentioned specifically for the Congregational Church, as Alder Person Malley mentioned, they have the youth group there in that building, the preschool. They also have the Sunday School that they have there, and the Scouts troop meets there as well. So that is, that building is used for their ministries. For the Lutheran Church, they have their elder day program there, and that building is actually called the Ministry Center. And I realize that, I don't know if you guys realize that, but it's called the Ministry Center. And Pastor Jeff confirmed that there they hold their vacation Bible school in the summers, the Scouts group goes there as well, and that location is their backup worship location. If the church, if something happened to the church, that's where they would worship. So that is within the 100 feet. So that is within the 100 feet of Gammon. Mutual Ground also meets there and they have counseling in that building. And the director of the elder day program also hosts Bible studies there and occasional worship services on Sundays in that area. So the question was before, do they hold worship there? Yes, they do. That was confirmed by Pastor Jeff at the Lutheran Church. So I am, you know, on the side of sending this back to commission. I think that the plan commission, I think that's a great idea to get more investigation on this, more research. I don't feel comfortable with staff and police telling us that they don't feel that they're in compliance with the statute. So I'll be voting no on this.
Alderman Wolf?
Yeah, just real quick on this. This whole notion of tabling this, this situation, I am very against. I mean, this is something where we already had the only gaming commission approve it. Technically, there's nothing in violation, as we heard from the city attorney, with our local laws right now. I mean, when I, I'm just thinking back just a couple of weeks ago, when we actually had the King County State's attorney in here talking about an ordinance that we were discussing and how it's completely unenforceable. And I said we should table something and I was literally almost booed out of the room. So I just find this to be a situation where this is even, this is way more clear cut. We already have a decision that came down from the gaming commission. I don't see any reason to table this. And I would actually, unless somebody else has more comments, I want to call it for a vote on the actual ordinance itself.
Second.
Alderman Wolf?
I have a comment. I guess the more I listen to what's being said tonight, the more I fear that we are opening up a giant can of worms. If we deny this license because we can't satisfy the need to know the exact distance from the building that a church or school is, that the liquor license is basically based off the same thing, maybe a different way to measure it or different, slightly different distance. But there's a case that could be made that somebody would decide to sue the city as to why we gave a liquor license to the same place when worship services occur less than 100 feet from it, or school occurs less than 100 feet from it. And, you know, that same case could be made for the liquor license. So just remember what we're voting about. And the reality is, is that it does meet the standard or the state wouldn't have approved it.
Alderman Wolf?
Thank you for sharing that. I don't believe that the liquor code is the same as the gambling code. Can I ask the city attorney, is there a feat, what, what is the foot limit for the liquor code and how does that interact with our current discussion?
Under the liquor code, it's 100 feet from any school or church. The case law has developed in terms of measurement and theirs from the place of worship nearest to liquor establishment to the property line. So that's how you measure 100 feet.
Okay, and so we would find ourselves in a position where Gammon Coach House may find themselves outside of the state liquor code at the moment?
Depends on where that property line is. I haven't, we have not, I'm not aware where that property line is and have not done that measurement, so.
Scott, I believe Scott wants to, to jump in here.
Yeah, I, I don't know if this facility was grandfathered though, for the liquor license because of the change in the code, I think, is what happened. I want to say it was around 2011, that I think there was a change. So I think it's a grandfathered facility, so I don't think the liquor license is an issue, so.
Yeah, and so that's another big question mark that we would need to figure out here, right? Another reason to delay. So perhaps they are in compliance, we don't know. Again, some time would really help here and going back to the commission would really help here. Perhaps they are allowed to have their liquor license because in 2011, it was allowed. Of course, the gaming, video gaming was 2016 when we passed the ordinance. And so the law has changed, so they are allowed to have a liquor license, but they are maybe not allowed to have gambling license. Those two things are entirely possibly true. Once again, I think it's really important that we dive into the weeds. There's nothing arbitrary about this. It's important that we uphold our ordinances and that we look into it. There's no rush here. We can spend some time. We can figure this out. And just so we're aware, my proposal is not to table this matter. My proposal is to send it back to committee, to the commission, to the committee and really dive in and find out what's going on here, right? So it's not going to be, not going to disappear into the land of bureaucracy, it's going to, to be fact finding. So my vote is going to be a no vote here with an immediate motion to send this ordinance back to committee for further review, which I think is the proper parliamentary process here for that.
Alderman Beck?
Yeah, one comment and then a parliamentary question. The, the idea that the state governing body approved this, probably based on a Google search, like was mentioned, on what the activities are for those buildings, yet we sit here, we can see the buildings in question from our seats. We know these pastors by their first names. We are literal neighbors to people that go to those churches. We haven't had a chance to hear from them yet. I, I, we have the local control. The state's decision weighs very little on my head whatsoever. This is our town. This is our community. These are our buildings. This is our businesses. This is our tax base and we are, we are degrading it by making these decisions. And then my parliamentary question was, when, obviously just making a motion and seconding it to move things along, I understand that. But calling a question and ending a debate, I was reading up on my Roberts rules, takes a two-thirds vote to end debate, is that correct? So if anybody wants to stop discussion, it does take two-thirds of us to actually stop a debate from happening any longer. And I also wanted to see if there was anybody from the community that wanted to speak to.
I also would like to hear from the community. And one of my questions is, were the places of worship approached for feedback from the plan commission? Do we know?
We, we did not approach the individual facilities, no. I mean, that was not something that we would normally would have done. They were received, they would have received notice for the public hearing in front of the plan commission because they're an adjacent property owner. So they would have received the mailed notice as part of the public hearing in front of the plan commission.
So the plan commission did then most likely just Google to get their information. I also am curious how our home rule status in our ordinance should take precedence over the state's ruling, if we so determine, correct?
Home rule status doesn't really impact our, the council's ability to disregard or follow the state's ruling. The home rule authority goes more to whether or not you want to deviate from the state statutes or not in terms of areas of regulation. And as I said before, since it's a conditional use, the council does have the authority to deny the conditional use, it's not an automatic use, just because the property owner wants to have this activity concern or occur on their property.
Yeah, and that was, you know, in our previous discussion last week and in previous years. My no vote has been along the lines of, I don't think this meets the vision of our downtown long-term planning goals and our strategic plan for our economic development priorities. So that's where my no vote is tonight. But I, I am hearing just the nuance that is happening to make this work and I think that's a slippery slope. Also, if we're saying, okay, we don't have to have direct line of sight and we can just do cameras, then why couldn't somebody just have in their basement, like in, of their retail, and just have a camera upstairs? I, I just feel like we're just making more and more, we're not keeping true to our statute and that makes, that's a little concerning.
Alderman Farinbach?
Yeah, one more comment, then, then I'll stop. So I feel like we're, obviously we have some conditions we need to resolve at some point potentially. However, this is an established business, it's been around since 2011. It has, this has been an asset to the community, this Gammon Coach House has been. It has not been this wild, crazy bar over the past 11 years, people are running in and out. We don't allow exterior advertising. It is going to be put off into, to a separate room. And more importantly, you know, having been here for six months now, it seems like every week we bump into something where it's like, well, we had nothing to do with, how did it up there, just set it up there, right? So if I were in the applicant's shoes, who's actually in the room right now, not only am I hearing that, by the way, we're still fuzzy on this 100-foot limit thing from a city council perspective, we also potentially gave you a bad liquor license. Okay, so, 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 so I mean, we have to like own up the message that we're kind of given for, for some of this stuff. And so I'd ask the applicant, John, do you, do you want to speak? Okay.
I'm John With, owner of Gammon Coach House. This has been a wonderful town to be in. We have started as the forefront of craft beer. Had a lot of people coming to us. A lot of other bars were much different than mine. They were mostly domestic beers. They were not interested in craft beer. But as things changed, more and more bars started carrying craft beer. In addition, because of this wonderful city, we have had a lot of people move into town, come into town, start businesses in town. And I took a small place, which was cozy, but unfortunately, I can't maintain that business without being competitive. And part of that unfortunately means that at this point in time, I would like to be just like everybody else in town that has a liquor license and be able to have the opportunity to increase my revenues by having gaming. This back room was where we decided to put up that area for gaming, simply because we didn't want it to be in the dining area, where most of the places around here, you see video gaming over in a corner somewhere where people are walking right by it all the time. Those churches, particularly where the grade school is and where you have the nursery and all that stuff, you can't even see into that room. There are places here where they're supposed to keep it away from the public view, but they have not. Alls I'm looking for is to have the same opportunity as all of the other places that have gaming. I paid for a survey. I paid for a lot of attorney's fees to talk to the state about what the situation was. I talked to one of the churches. I got an opportunity to talk to them about my patio area, where I am actually a little bit on their property. So I changed my insurance to be able to make sure that that church was protected. I have tried to contribute to this city in many different ways, but at this point in time, I'm struggling. And I've done all I can here and I've, unfortunately, I didn't put it in in the beginning because I liked what I had, but unfortunately, I now, I can't put up that new fence that I wanted to put up because I have to save to be able to survive. Well, I'm here for you now to tell you that I just want to be like everybody else. Alls I want to do is have a fair opportunity.
Can I ask a question, sir? If I could? So we've heard a lot of people talk about on this council, how much they love going to your establishment. And I understand that you've, you've had some struggles. And would you agree that without being able to have this conditional use permit for video gaming, there's a better than 50/50 chance you might not survive?
Correct.
So that would effectively kill your business, correct?
Correct.
Alderman Wolf?
Yeah, so thank you for coming before us. I am one of the folks who have very much enjoyed your establishment. I've spent time there. I would watch Bears games there, watch some Liverpool games there, had a great time talking with Jesse behind the bar, talking with John Dryden behind the bar, talking with Lori Holm, a lot of the folks who were there. And your establishment was unique and is unique. And one of the unique parts of it is that it is nestled between two churches, I believe. So first, I do want to reaffirm that I think the folks who are skeptical and questioning video game usage in your location, we, we think you ran a great business, okay? However, the reality is that the business is between two churches, right? You know, we don't put sludge factories near rivers anymore and we don't put, you know, gambling next to churches anymore. And so I, I want to, you know, I'm, I'm speaking against you having the video gaming, so I want to look you in the eye. I want to look you in the eye and I want to be frank and honest with you that I did like your, your establishment, but I'm going to have to vote no. And I apologize that, you know, we put money, you put money out and that you've really put yourself out there. And I really do hope that your business is able to succeed. However, I don't think video gambling is good in that spot. I also think that we have some real questions that we need to make sure we answer about sightlines, about property lines. All of the staff has, that has spoken on this, has raised issues. Every single one of them has raised issues. So we need to take the time, we need to spend a minute and we need to figure out, are we in compliance with our own ordinance? We can say yes tomorrow. We can't say no tomorrow, okay? So just take a minute, let's get to the bottom of this and make sure that we are following our own ordinance here. Last thing I'm going to say is that sort of hovering all of this is this theory of liability, right? Oh man, are we exposing ourselves to risk if we say no? You know, first off, anyone can sue anyone for anything, right? That's sort of the, the way things is. Now, whether it has legs or not is the question. We are the deciding body here. Our ordinance gives us the power to do that. And I think we've made it very abundantly clear that this isn't an arbitrary decision in any sort of way. We've all spent a lot of time considering the particulars of this case and are we within the law? And we're spending so much time figuring that out. So I just want to lay to rest the idea that we are exposing ourselves, right? Like maybe we'll get sued, but you can sue somebody for anything. We are absolutely taking the time and doing the diligence to, to move forward, as is our ability as a council. So I would also be very interested in hearing members of the public as well. So I want to make sure that we, we have them speak as well.
Alderman Lancy?
Yeah, John, I want to thank you for coming up and, and speaking and thank you for your establishment is actually the, the very first place someone from this area, when I lived in Mill Creek, brought me in Batavia, it was the very first place. So, and he grew up in West Chicago and said, you got to come to this place. So, and then we ended up at the Dan Bar and I don't remember the rest of it, but it was a long time ago. But, you know, the more I sit back and I, and I hear some of this from council, I really do, I really do feel like the vast majority of the folks that don't want this at your establishment don't like video gaming at all. And it's a, and it's a stance on, on that regard and they're going to use the, the ordinance against you. I think that would be a travesty. I think if we're worried about distance from things that matter, you know, we have a large bank of these gaming machines right next to the most economically affected folks in our town, right? I don't think people are going to leave church and go over and gamble right away. Might have a cocktail, might go in and gamble, who knows? That's totally up to them. But if we're going to stand on that ground, I think we really need to think about that as a whole. And I know we're going to have this conversation, but, you know, that kind of stuff bothers me because I, I do feel that we are now... that kind of stuff bothers me because I do feel that we are now picking winners and losers. This guy doesn't deserve it. So, you know, given what the state gaming commission passed or deemed was acceptable, I think we need to do the same. And then we need to button up our ordinance.
Since to the extent that the prior, I guess it was a motion or a calling to question was made by me, I'm withdrawing that because what I wanted to do was make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-66 conditional use permit for video gaming establishment in the DMU downtown mixed use district, Gammon Coach House, 3 South Batavia Avenue, John With and Mike Dixon, Gammon Coach House LLC applicant. So I'm making that motion.
Motion and second. Are we ready to stop discussion? Alderman Malay?
Yeah, I would like to just point out that the youth group that meets regularly there within 100 feet are middle and high school teenagers that are extremely impressionable. And that's the point of not having gambling by schools and churches and places. And that's what we thought we were putting in place when we passed the ordinance originally. Has nothing to do with my, what I think of video gaming itself. It's the location where it's at. And as I said in the beginning, it's the image that I do not want for this town. I spend a lot of time, as everyone on this council does, committed to this town, because we want to make it the best, best place it can be. Having video games, it's already gotten out of control in my eyes. And every time we, you know, again, Mayor, I'm going to reiterate, you warned us about a storefront video gaming cafe. And that is what we have already. They got around it. And they, and the same owners that own other ones got past the limits. So it is the image of this town, but it's the, the code that we have passed that says, keep it away from our, from our youth. Keep it away from our churches. And here we are between two churches, a nursery school, and a, a youth teenager, youth group that meets regularly and worships within 100 feet, I think is blatantly in violation of what we had planned to do, or what we were planning. So.
Alderman Wolf?
Alderman Lowman had her hand up first.
I just wanted to say two things. One, we were elected to be representative of the community. And in every decision that we make, you know, the community and what they want is forefront for me. For this issue specifically, I have not heard anyone in the community tell me that they want more gaming in town. So for me, I will continue to be a no vote because every community member that I've spoken to in Batavia has said they don't want more gaming. So unless I hear otherwise, I would feel differently. But for now, that's the only thing I've heard. Limitations and no more. The second thing is we have Bethany Lutheran Church members here that would like to speak as well.
Alderman Wolf?
I guess I would like to know where the storefront is that we talked about to begin with. They can't happen in this town because you have to have a liquor license for one year before you can get gaming. And it has to have a business there. It can't just be a gaming facility. I'd love to know where that is. That's just a gaming facility.
Overflow, that you see it right there in the, in the, the front window. That's a bar.
So is a Dottie's and a Dixie's.
So are those storefront cafes? They serve liquor?
It's not. It is not.
It's a totally different thing. So to try to compare them is wrong.
If, if a place can't exist on the food and beverage that they're providing, and they need gambling in order to keep the doors open, that's a Dottie's or a Dixie's in essence. It is, we discussed trying to have some sort of a limitation on knowing whether or not this became a majority of their business model. And I think that was shot down just because of the logistics of auditing or something. But I, I know these, these machines, these machines will keep it open. These machines will keep them open. These machines have the capacity of being the majority of somebody's revenue. If it's a majority of your revenue, that's a Dottie's.
Yes, agree. You know, I apologize. I know I said I was going to be done. And I want to be done. But when it comes to this, I just can't help but say it, we have a tendency just to create car crashes. I mean, this is ridiculous, right? So we got two things now. Now we have the, the smoke stack, right? We're talking about how we all, we all knew was, everyone knew it was falling over. And oh, sorry, we ended, now it's getting demolished. With this, we had the Ask for Max. I actually read the presentation. I remember it. I wasn't even on council, right? Very nice, well thought out. Hey, here's how you regulate this stuff. We didn't do that either. Right? So either, either you do it or you don't. If you don't want to regulate stuff, then expect more situations like this. Right? If you, if you're gonna regulate it, stuff like this just doesn't happen. Right? And that's the reality of it. I'm seeing it all across the board now over the past six months. In my opinion, it's just another case. On that note, don't penalize John for it. Right? Because we set it up, we, we put the car in the track and we let it go for, for a lot of this stuff. So that's my take on it.
So let me tell a story. Back in the mid 1970s, I was at the city council meetings. I was the newspaper reporter. And I covered the city council. And this conversation came up almost identical to the one we're having right now, because there was several places in downtown Batavia that then wanted to start to sell liquor. And one of them was Walt's supermarket over at Van Beeren and Webster, which is now just sold again. And they've got, it's half of that is a liquor store now in there. And then if you went down to the Batavia, Wilson Street from River up to Washington Avenue, you had the Baptist Church on the corner. But then going down the hill, you had three different bars. And then you go over on Batavia Avenue, and you had some different situations going. So we had an alderman at the time by the name of Bob Becker. And they were going to pass, I think this ordinance that we're dealing with here tonight. And Bob Becker said, well, I'm going to call this the Lucy Goosey ordinance. Because he says, I don't think it'll be enforced. I'm not sure it can be enforced. And that as times change, Batavia is going to change with them. And Batavia is going to have to sit back and just look at what's going on and try to deal with it. Because unless it gets real wild, you're probably going to have to let them do what they want to do. So if we look at things today, we now have the old Catholic church, which was in, under Monsignor Donovan at the time of the conversation. And I remember having the conversation with Monsignor Donovan. And he says, well, I don't really get excited about having liquor next door to me. He says, I serve liquor in my church. And then you had others say, well, you know, this probably isn't going to work. You're going to chase some people away. And then the big, one of the big ones happened when the congregational church bought the factory building at the corner of First and Batavia Avenue, and was going to tear that down. And they didn't know if they were going to build a church there or whatever. But right down the street was several liquor stores just across the street. And so they went ahead and did it. And all this stuff went ahead and was done. And everybody kind of understood what was happening. And we, it's all worked out quite well, in my opinion. You know, it's probably saved downtown Batavia a lot of problems over the years by having all this type of business in our downtown. So it's, it's stuff we have, if we had an ordinance, we have not enforced it. And that's the bottom line. And I certainly support what's being talked about here tonight because he runs a very good business. And it's a great place for old timers like myself to go in and see old friends and have a nice quiet luncheon and whatever have you. I don't want to see him close and go away. And if it's a voting machine or a gambling machine that's going to keep him in business, I'm all for it. Because there's a lot of other good things are done in his restaurant because of the support of that, if that's what he needs to have is a gaming machine.
I would like to hear from the members of congregation and the public who are here as well. So I would like to open up the, the mic to the peanut gallery.
Good evening, everybody. And thank you for letting me have a few minutes to speak here. My name is Debbie Garrison, and I am a 40 year member of Bethany Lutheran Church. As you know, Mayor, a couple of years ago, we celebrated our 150th anniversary. So we've been around for a long time. And I want to thank you, from where I was sitting, I couldn't see everybody who was talking over here. They pretty much took the words right out of my mouth. We have increased our ministry in the city of Batavia, Batavia over a number of years. It's why we purchased the Old McQuain School and established the Ministry Center. And thank you, Ms. Lowman, for detailing some of the other ministries like mutual, mutual ground that are in the Ministry Center. Most of the ministries that take place in that facility serve children. We have two scout troops in there, a boy scout troop and a girl scout troop, which means there are children about fifth grade and up, who spend a lot of time in that building. Our youth group has a dedicated room in that building. It's used for a number of outreach opportunities in the city with plans for much more. I, right now, I can speak from my own personal standpoint. I don't want to see this pass. I don't want gaming within a few feet of the church. It just doesn't send a good message. Secondly, nothing against Gammon House. We've, they've been a good neighbor to us. Hopefully, we have to them. For a number of years, well, until COVID, we held one of our Bible studies over there. I just don't think watching gaming and doing that would be appropriate. I can only speak for myself in this. I've talked about the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, our youth group meets in there. You also know about Elder Day. This decision here will potentially impact some of our future, future ministry opportunities. We do a number of fellowships. We try to rent the facility out. I made several notes. I apologize. I'm kind of fumbling over here. Again, that's my personal opinion. I do know that the church has submitted a written letter responding to this document. I'm not sure how many of you have seen that copy. But I really, if nothing else, would echo back the recommendation to take some time with this. 30 days. I mean, and really look at what you're doing, not just to benefit him. We hope that there are other opportunities as well that can boost that business. We wouldn't want to see him leave. But we really don't want to see gaming either. I guess that's it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Are we ready for some kind of a motion?
I made a motion. Yeah, I would like to move to refer. That's a secondary motion that can be made. And I move to refer it to committee. Back to the planning commission for further review.
Do we vote on the motion that's before, or should we vote on his?
So there's opportunity for discussion now on the motion to refer or motion to commit.
That's what I'm doing. I'm asking for legal advice on that.
Yeah, discussion on the motion to refer. And then you vote on that. And if that gets defeated, then you go back to Alderman's office motion to approve.
I have to second the ref. I second.
Just a real quick comment. I mean, if you look at the planning commission report, the exact wording is commissioners and their deliberations agreed that the state's vetting locate of the location was thorough and found no reason to disagree with those determinations. I think it's very clear amongst our discussions, there is a split decision on that. It is not thorough nor clear. There's a lot of discussion. So I would just ask that if we are referring it back to the planning commission, very clear instructions of what you want changed, reviewed, looked at, and a timeline to bring it back. Let's not keep John waiting.
I think that's totally fair. Yes.
Alderman Way?
Yeah, the, this is my train of thought here. I appreciate what you had to say there that, yes, the commission did say that. I wonder if the state or the commission heard from the churches, heard from those groups. How thorough that is, is very questionable to me when they did it. So I would say part of the direction should be that the plan commission hear from the churches, the pastors and the, and the church leaders.
We're going to have a motion to defer.
Can I ask why? What's the purpose around that? What's the why? What are you hoping to get?
It was clearly said that, well, the state determined that worship happens over here. Well, I can tell you, being in that church, worship doesn't just happen over here. It happens over here, too.
But the state doesn't issue the license. So why, so what is the why? What are you hoping to get out of that? The church to favor it? And for them to override it?
What I'm hoping for is that a church, particularly my church, that's been in this community for more than a century, is given due respect to say, to be able to say what they, what they're feeling is.
They are getting respect.
They haven't been included to this point.
Alderman Barrister?
Isn't the mechanism for including them, the public hearing of the plan commission?
Where they give notice.
They were notified as neighbors that there was a public.
Mayor, I'm going to direct. I think we're talking about two separate processes. The state gaming board, I think that's what Alderman Malay was hinting to was around that the church was consulted or provided evidence or what evidence was presented to the gaming board. The plan commission, as Mr. Buning indicated, were given notice of the plan commission meeting. That would have been a separate hearing. And the state issues their own license. That's what the state gaming board issued. Now the question is whether or not the city council is going to issue the city license to the Gammon Coach House.
The motion on the floor is to defer.
Refer back to the plan commission.
So why don't we have the court call the role in the motion to defer?
Clarify to make sure we all know what we're voting for there and not just the motion to refer. Please elaborate.
Yeah. So what I would propose would be that it go back to the planning commission, that the planning, planning commission seek guidance from the city attorney, seek clear guidance from the chief of police, and clear guidance from our zoning commission on our, is this gaming license in compliance with our ordinance as written? If the answer is yes, indicate which parts it is. If the answer is no, indicate which parts it is. And if the answer is it is unclear, provide feedback on what specifically is unclear. I would propose that the planning commission decide the timeline for coming back, but that it be on the planning commission's agenda, certainly for the next meeting, for the very next meeting. And I guess, yeah. And I guess the question, this will now be a question to, to Roman, to Mr. Sekel. Do, do we have a mechanism to gain information from the Illinois Gaming Board?
I don't know the answer to that question. I, we can research it. My guess though is the Gammon Coach House has received some sort of written opinion from the state that we can probably maybe get from the attorney. I'm not sure. I just, I don't know the answer to the question.
Yeah. And I guess I would want an answer to that as well, before it comes back to us. I see lots of hands over there.
Alderman?
I would like to have the, the planning commission inquire with the state gaming board how they determine where worship happens. And, and to FOIA that, the process that was used in the, in determining what that was.
I may. Mayor?
Mayor, can, can Scott please, because he went through a lot to try to get information from the gaming board?
We have done that. We've tried the gymnastics of that, unfortunately. And the way the statute is, is designed is to not provide any of that information. That's, that's the bottom line. They are not FOIABLE. I tried to file FOIA. They basically rejected our FOIA. It's actually not discoverable in court. It's actually says that in the statute. So everything that the gaming board decides
So everything that the gaming board decides is basically secret, and you cannot find that information even if you sue somebody. So that is the stat-- that's the state of the gaming laws in the state, is that you cannot find any of that information if you tried. So the only documents that we received was the application, we received the rejection letter, we received the actual license that was approved, and then later on, their attorney did provide the copy of the survey and then the floor plan of the facility, but that's, those are the only documents we've been provided.
Point of information, was the Plan Commission aware of that?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we'll have a vote.
May I reiterate the motion?
Good luck. But yes, let's get it, yeah.
I'm gonna check, so you all know what you're saying yes or no to. Motion by Alderman Malone, seconded by Lehman, to refer the permit back to the Planning Committee. Specified that the Planning Committee should seek clear guidance on whether the gaming permit is in compliance with the city ordinance. If there is confusion, the Committee should advise in what capacity the confusion exists.
Yes, I think that that checks the boxes, yes.
Great.
Can the court call the roll?
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
No.
Sulfah.
No.
Barron.
No.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Farenbach.
No.
Anderson.
No.
White.
Aye.
Barazza.
No.
Lancy.
No.
Beck.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Seven to seven, Your Honor.
Oh, that's interesting. I will vote. What did you guys do, guys? No?
No.
Yeah, I'm voting no.
Mayor Schulke votes no, breaks the tie, motion is defeated.
Motion second. Let's see here, I'll read it exactly since I already made the motion, but I'll do it again. Motion to approve ordinance 2025-066, conditional use permit for a video gaming establishment in the DMU downtown mixed-use district, Gammon Coach House, 3 South Batavia Avenue. John With and Mike Dixon, Gammon Coach House LLC applicant.
Second.
Motion second. Court call the roll.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
No.
Lohman.
No.
Peeper.
No.
Farenbach.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
No.
Malley.
No.
Malone.
No.
Wolf.
Aye.
Eight to six, eight in favor, six opposed.
Motion's approved. So in the eyes of the council, we're done with this one?
Don't do that one, 9.5 is next.
All right, we have been going for two hours here, and I'm gonna call for about a three-minute recess, just to let everybody get up and stretch, and we will resume in about three to five minutes. Thank you all very much. Felskis. Will we convene the city council? All right, where did we leave? Okay, our next item on the agenda is ordinance 9.5, ordinance 2025-068, certificate of appropriateness for chimney demolition at 25 to 31 North River Street. Who's got this one?
I do, Your Honor. So another long discussion was had last week, anticipate some more comments tonight to discuss the appropriateness of demoing the smokestack located on River Street. Last week, I will say that a lot of my comments were made from a place of complete surprise because when Scott sent the email to us saying that they were issuing this letter to the property owner, that they'd be seeking this approval to demo it because of the lack of maintenance that had been done and the potential hazard that had been created, I sent him an email back and I said, I support this initiative because I fully expected, like, this will be the last, you know, this is the last resort, and we'll finally get the restoration and the maintenance done that we need to, because I couldn't imagine a scenario where the response was, sure, tear it all down. Like, I naively, I just naively thought that this would be the poke that got the results that we actually wanted, and I feel really dumb about that, but I'm sharing all that with you to let you know that my naive response was, I just, I was really surprised, and I was really surprised at the way that the discussion went. And been thinking about it all week has taken up way too much space in my brain. I kind of have three things that I have been stewing on, what our future preservation program looks like, and the standards, as Alder Person Farenbach had said in the last discussion, that keeps us from getting into these situations and actually put a program in place. I know that we have the building conditions study that is coming up. I am hoping, Scott and your team, that, first of all, it doesn't get pushed off another year, that it gets done, and maybe in tandem, we're already looking at the other smokestacks in town and other really critical, all of River Street, basically, to say, in my six years on city council, I have now approved, or sat here and approved, three demolitions of historic structures in our downtown, and we haven't built any, we've only torn them down. So I want to see that trend reversed. I also have been stewing on this habit of kind of operating with insufficient information. The engineering study that we are all referencing was bought and paid for by the party that wants to tear it down. The engineer was asked for an assessment, the quality of the structure, they were not asked, what is it going to take to restore it? So we got an assessment that said, tear it down, but we never asked the other question. Engineers will answer the questions that are asked of them. What will it take to tear it down? When you have a project in your home, you do not get one bid, you get multiple bids. I think it would be irresponsible for us to operate with only one set of information from one source, from one party who has their angle, we have a different angle, we have a different desire for our downtown, we should be seeking that information and asking for an estimate, just an estimate, of what it would cost to restore it. A resident sent me an article about a 250-foot chimney that was restored in Maine in 2019, 250 feet, much larger than ours, it was $115,000 in a similar state to ours. We were thrown out all sorts of numbers last week, it's gonna cost half a million, it's gonna cost a million, it's gonna cost 1.5 million at one point, we can't legislate on speculations, we have to have actual information that we can talk to. Another resident also sent me a handful of grants, more than a handful, many, many grants. I clicked through and found at least three that were viable, that were still funded, that would take down some of the cost of that restoration. It could go to the city to fund legal costs, it could go to the city to fund engineering, it could go to the property owner or a nonprofit to fund the actual restoration. We have not evaluated all of these options, we were just told, no, there's none. And then my third point is like, the only thing I could think of to call it was like a citywide confidence issue or self-esteem issue, I don't know what it is. I work on a farm in Naperville, and on the farm are two farmhouses, one's original to the farm and the other one was moved there about 10 years ago. It sat on a farm about five miles away, the farmhouse was considered historic by the city of Naperville, and they demanded that the developer, who bought the farm to put houses there, demanded that the developer save the house. The house was in terrible shape, it could not be saved. So the city of Naperville demanded that the developer take it down, limestone brick by limestone brick, it looks very much like this wall, mark them, rebuild the house exactly as is on our property. It now houses half of our offices. I just can't even imagine us having the courage to like, put that demand on a developer, and I hate that I can't imagine us doing that. I don't know if we don't think we deserve it, if we don't think we deserve the investment, if we don't think we can set standards and hold them, again, to Alder Person Farenbach's point. And I hope we can in the future, because I think the community does deserve that, I think we deserve that investment, and I want to see that happen for us and for our downtown so that this better be the last thing on River Street that I am asked to tear down in the time that I sit here. That is, that is the most important set of structures that we have that set our identity, that make us unique, and if this is the demolition that maybe gets some of those properties sold, and we get some investment, and we get someone who cares to take those properties, then, fine, but I don't think we exhausted all the options, I don't think we should pass this without at least exploring what it would take to restore.
Yes? Would the owner like to speak?
Oh, sorry. Here's a comment. You know, Ebbie, you just stated that, you know, it's all about wild speculation on cost, but you brought up something that happened in 2019 in Maine, and we have no idea what was done there, why it was done, how it was done, and I'll guarantee you, whatever they did in Maine in 2019, costs a lot more today than it did in 2019. Right, and my next question is, why? Why do we want to save a smokestack that has been a detriment to that property that, in my mind, has kept it from being sold? You know, it's been on the market, and I don't know the exact amount of years, but it's been on the market for a long time, and, you know, I've heard enough stories about people going in and looking at it and saying they didn't want to buy the property just because of that smokestack. And that's without ever even looking at what you would do to restore it, and what is it gonna be used for? What is it gonna maintain in Batavia? What is the historical significance of that smokestack? I mean, if it was the original one that was built there in the 1800s, and it was square and actually had some real character to it, I could see trying to save it, if you were gonna reuse that building as an ice house, or as a dairy, you know, to tie that into it. Nobody's ever proposed doing that with that, except for the first restaurant that was in there, when those buildings were redone, you know, the first round of redoing it. So I guess my thought is, I've lived here since 1972, and I am very involved in the history of this town, and I don't know what the big tie-in to our downtown that smokestack provides. This building, the limestone, other things that we have torn down, that we hopefully will get reused, if BEI ever uses the store of limestone in our town, they have had probably, I guess maybe a third to a half of all the giant limestone pieces that they salvaged from the buildings they tore down, and they want to reuse that in our downtown. So I'm all for that. If this has to come down, let's save 10, 20 feet of it and put it somewhere that the city or the park district or somebody owns, and let's make a monument out of it, let's make it actually be something that people could come down and talk about, whatever the history was behind that stack, with a big plaque alongside of it, and make something nice in a place where people can appreciate it. And then get the property sold, get it redeveloped, and have something that really stands out on River Street, not just a 100-year-old smokestack that everybody's waiting to see when it falls down. I'm done.
And I would like to add on to what he's just said. In 19, what was this? 1979, I got a call from John Gusterson, and he had written the first history book on Batavia, and he was not in physical shape that he could continue to write it, the idea was he was gonna, he wrote it from when it started through 1961, and there was now 10 years on that hadn't been recorded, and there was 10 more, and he wanted to know would I be willing to write the update of the history of Batavia from when he stopped it till the current day. So I agreed to do that, and so I did it. And so then subsequently, John passed away, and then another 20 years passed, and Marilyn Robinson, who had been a teacher at Batavia High School, she stepped forward and said she would write the history of Batavia from when Jeff Schulke stopped till 2019, I think it was. So it got, been updated three times, it's written twice, and I just want to say, I thought about this quite a bit since the last meeting, I don't think that smokestack's even mentioned in any one of our three books. It was not anything that was any historical significance, it was changed several times, the use of the building was changed, there was a lot of different things went on, and at the end, somebody added some more depth to it to give it some more height, I think, to get the smoke out of the neighborhood, if nothing else, but that was the only reason that it's up as high as it is. And I get, my big fear would be that, God forbid, some night that thing fell down, and we would be on every newscast in the whole, probably, the country, and God forbid, somebody got killed underneath it, and the question then would be, well, why didn't that city council take some action to do something about that smokestack? Well, now's our chance, and we've got a good owner at the moment who's got some ideas and some people waiting to maybe do some creative things with that building, and I just think allowing for that smokestack to be taken down, not at the cost of the city, but we're agreeing to let that smokestack come down, I think it's gonna be a major step forward for the East Side Business District in Batavia. Who else wanted to speak?
So Alder Person Beck, thank you for your comments, I think she nailed it on the head. People were assuming between the owner and the city that the smokestack was being taken care of, and it turns out it wasn't been, it wasn't, right, because, for whatever reason. And I think there's a lot of emotional investment as a result, because people understand that we're not taking care of these properties, right? And so that they're hitting demolition, and I think that's causing a lot of the emotional response to this demolition, because quite frankly, when you look at the engineering report, it's like, hey, we probably do need to take this down, right? And it'd be a replacement, it wouldn't be a rebuild. But the reality is, what's triggering people is the acknowledgement that we're not taking care of our older properties, and that's the emotional gist of it. I will share a minor story, I've been here for 20 years, so now I can tell a story as somebody who's been here for a while. When I first moved into town, this town had some quirks I was getting used to, I was in the old limestone location, which was right in the corner where Guy Tonos used to be, and I was talking to a young man in his probably early 30s, and he was telling me a story of when the owner of the building offered him $20,000 to scale the chimney with rock climbing gear, and using just a hammer and Home Depot buckets to demolish it by hand, right? So that chimney has been a known issue for a long time, for multiple owners, it sounds like. And to the question of whether we get another estimate, I don't think there's necessarily harm in it, I did ask prior to the meeting what that would potentially cost, I think it came back around eight grand. I don't think you're gonna get a different result, just based on the original study that we had, and I know Matt wasn't here for the original conversation, so do you want to weigh in on your opinion?
Yeah, so, sorry I wasn't here last time, as the probably only engineer here on council and in construction, I can tell you it's gonna be more than a quarter million dollars, the scaffolding that you have to take to go up there and tuck point everything in the masonry, it's gonna cost a lot of money, it's gonna cost even more money to rebuild it. There are some major concerns, I mean, seeing daylight through any masonry is a problem structurally, so structural engineers said needs to come down, I would stand behind them on that.
Hold on, Lehman.
Thank you. Part of, this is like a two-part discussion, I feel like it's a little bit of, what are we doing with the smokestack, but then it's also, what are we doing as a city representing our community with our historic downtown? So, you know, thank you, Alder Man Farenbach and Alder Woman Beck for your comments on, kind of like, how did we get here? Back in July, I was at Cocktails in the Park, right out here, and it was a gorgeous evening, and we were standing on the river, and standing there with some community members, and all of a sudden, they were like, hey, what's happening with the smokestack? Like, you know, we've heard rumors and blah, 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 and I was like, I was like, well, you know, nothing has come to city council at that point, and I said, I haven't heard anything, I don't think anything's happening, like, I think it's all fine, let me reach up city staff and see if I can get some information. So, beginning of August, soon after that, I emailed city staff, and I'm reading a little bit from the email, I said, "I've recently received questions from community members about the future of the iconic smokestack on North River Street. Some are concerned that the city and property owner may opt for removal instead of exploring opportunities for conservation and investment in this piece of our downtown's history." And it kind of goes on, I go on a little bit longer. Nothing really came of that email, nothing came to city council. Nothing came to city council at that point. But here we are with a very sudden, and I understand urgent, because I agree with Alderperson Anderson, you know, like, this is concerning. I just hate that we got here and are now pressed for a very urgent decision instead of taking care of this probably decades ago. To Alderperson Wolf's comment, though, no, we're not going to use it as an ice cream parlor chimney or whatever. But in my email to staff back in August, I said iconic smokestack, because I really do think it's an iconic part of our downtown. When, you know, people think of downtown Batavia, our chimneys, we have two of them currently, I think, on the river, are very unique. And I like Batavia being unique. So, to me, that's where the character, the history, the iconic part of it. I'm going to be very sad when we lose this. Hate that we're here, and I really hope that this is kind of our wake-up call to not be here again, because I'm done tearing stuff down as much as we can. And we understand. We love, look at this building. We love taking our old stuff and making it better, and sturdy shelter, and even Gammon House, like, it's one of the oldest buildings in Batavia, I think. I don't know, actually making that up. But, so, the more we can just hang on to our history, and I think that's good, so.
What else? Alderwoman Mon?
Yeah, I think I share a lot of the sentiments. As I've been looking at this problem, I've been thinking of three different parts for it. But kind of taking a couple steps back, a couple steps back, why do we preserve things? And why this smokestack in particular? You know, as I was listening to this, the bataviaillinois.gov page happened to be up, and half of the pictures we put on our website have the smokestack in it, right? Is very clearly part of our skyline. I can read. I know that it's a, that part of it's going to have to come down. I can also read a room. I'm pretty sure the whole thing's going to come down, right, based on the votes I'm getting. I'm going to reiterate my original statement that if we vote no on this, I will immediately move that we vote to tear it down to the 22.7 as recommended in the ordinance. But I'll just throw that out there, and you can do with it as you will. So the three parts that I see of this. First is this chimney in particular. I do think that aesthetics has value, and in particular, pretty old buildings have value. Again, I think Alderperson Lehman said it nicely. We restore nice buildings because they bring people out. They add character, and character, if we have to put money on it, does generate economic growth and things of that sort, but it's also a nice thing to have. I believe the same citizen that Alderwoman Beck mentioned spoke with me. I'm not certain if it's the same person or not. But there is a citizen out there who has found numerous grants, like a pretty, pretty nice list of free money to attempt to save this smokestack. We are unfortunately in a position where I worry we'll make a decision without having even explored ways to have someone else pay to save it. But that's where we're at. Which then brings me to the second point. How do we stop ourselves from getting here again? We have two smokestacks. One of them's probably coming down. I'd like to ask staff, when was the last time the challenged smokestack has been looked at? Do we know the state of that smokestack?
We actually have a letter that is, we've talked to the owner or been in contact with them about some code enforcement things over the years. We do have a letter that's going out tomorrow on that. So that is one that we are definitely concerned about and want to make sure that is addressed.
Do we have sort of specific rules, codes, ordinances that require structures of a certain height to be reviewed in some periodic timeframe? Like, every couple of years or whatever it might be?
We don't have anything in the code, per se, that requires that. I mean, if we're aware of a particular safety issue or some, something that's, you know, observable, then, you know, we would address it. But we don't have anything specific, just like we don't have anything for most buildings to do the same thing, so.
So I would, and maybe we can do this offline a little bit, but I think we need to come up with some standards for buildings, the handful of buildings, you know, the 3, 4, 5, right? We're not talking the whole city. But some of our iconic buildings that we want to hang on to, I think we need to be looking at them more periodically and with more scrutiny. In particular, ones that are high and could fall on people, right? Yeah, Scott?
Sorry. In the budget, we do have money budgeted for doing an analysis of the buildings downtown in particular because of these issues that we've had. So we are budgeting for it, and we will be working, you know, to put out an RFP for a consultant to do the analysis of all the buildings that are either significant or contributing as part of that analysis.
And I'll make an effort. I'm going to make a note here. Once that analysis comes back, I want to follow up on this discussion of how can we follow up on these buildings so we don't find ourselves in this position again? And I hope the other Alders keep me accountable on that, and we follow up. I think specifically for smokestacks, but also some of our other buildings, we need to be looking at them a little more closely, right, given their historic nature. Which kind of brings me to my third point. We have imposed rules on folks in our historic district. We, as a government, are making them do things, but we're not helping them do it. I do think there's a role for us to play in grant-making for that, and I would be interested in having a discussion of specifically finding funding mechanisms. What comes to mind would be a portion of the gambling tax to put aside for grants to help folks in the historic district prevent their buildings from moldering into decay. I think we would probably get a high ROI on that. But do look for me moving that on to, actually, let me ask, would somebody join me in having that added to a future agenda to set aside funding to preserve, you know, to create a grant for preserving? I see lots of hands going up. Okay. Anyway, last thing I'm going to say, the citizen who reached out to me also mentioned that in particular swift swallows, no, chimney swifts, that's what they are. Love these big, tall buildings. I know we've capped it, so I know there's none living in there at the moment. But one of the ideas that really stuck out to me was, if we're talking maybe some sort of monument or trying to preserve some of that aesthetic, there are ways to build chimney swift habitat out of brick that look like chimneys and help birds that eat mosquitoes stay in our downtown. So I think that'd be a clever use if we do end up tearing this thing down.
You don't even have to build chimneys. You can just put it right in buildings.
I would like to note that the city did construct a chimney swift habitat just south of our electric substation by wastewater treatment. So we currently do have one downtown that is with, not brick material, but, you know, material of modern.
Cool. Now we'll have a bunch of bricks, we can make another one.
I'll just say that, you know, that's the first thing that came to my mind when I saw that email. I didn't even get through reading the email before I sent back the note that Linnea Miller was ecstatic about trying to get that done when buildings came down. And that's two blocks south of here, the first one of those. And that's kind of what I envisioned for whatever is salvageable from the smokestack, to make another monument, you know, to do that. And I think that's a great idea. You know, I think that's, to me, the way you adaptively reuse things that you can't keep.
I think also to consider it when something is being built, especially as we are potentially looking at those buildings along there being reconstructed or built, maybe put that in as they're building it, saying, you know, add one or two swift entries in there. Again, it doesn't have to be something where you create a smokestack. You can just create a side of a building for them to get into, into doing that. But I think that this isn't something where we're going to make a plan tonight for that, but I think it's something worth discussing down the road and looking at what other communities have done. I was fortunate to be in Westport, Ireland, who has done that, and they even did this in buildings, not even along the river, but throughout their community. And I think it's something that we should consider and look at when we're discussing this.
Alderperson Lehman?
I'm grateful to that resident who did that grant, some of that great research, at least the beginnings of it. I feel kind of inclined to take that and any other brainstorms that we and city staff can do and put all that effort into the challenge building chimney. I feel like that one is incredibly iconic. And we don't know the state of it yet. Hopefully, we have a little bit more time to preserve that one. But I do feel like, you know, this, I'm hesitant to delay with the information that we've been presented with this chimney on North River Street. I guess the challenge one is also on North River Street. But I guess I would like to take our efforts and put it towards the challenge chimney, assuming that it's also not in perfect condition and will need some restoration. So that's kind of where I'm thinking at the moment.
The owner want to speak?
Sure. A couple of things I wanted to address. I'm Mary Claire Keen, representing 25 through 31 North River Street. And good evening to everyone. A lot, it's been mentioned a lot about how this has come up as an urgency and it hasn't been addressed in a timely manner, et cetera. The thing I'd like to point out is that, in all fairness to the department and the codes, this is a unique situation because, and yes, you guys haven't gotten, you know, talked to the people that, you know, professionals as far as the chimney goes or the engineers got your own report or anything like that. But over the last couple of years, I've talked to a lot of demolition companies and repair companies, chimney company repair, and then engineers. I had a couple of engineers who said they didn't want to touch it. They didn't know enough about chimneys. They didn't want to deal with it. They didn't want to do a report for me. And I don't know how it happened, how I found this gentleman, but through talking and discussing with other engineers and so on, I ended up landing on him. So it's unique to these guys, and it's not something where I feel that they lacked in keeping an eye on the codes or anything with this chimney. The only thing that was ever discussed were the bricks and the mortar on the outside, because that's all that could be seen to the naked eye. Once I got this gentleman, and he went in and said, and he knew what he was talking about with chimneys, as we, we've gone over this a million times, he's done over 1,000 reports. And we found out that the inside was what was the most critical. Nobody knew that. We didn't know that. I didn't know that. None of the other engineers I spoke with knew that. None of the, none of the repair, chimney repair companies knew that, and none of the demolition companies knew that. Not one person said that to me until I talked to that engineer. And he said, we have to go inside, and we have to look at it. They didn't know that either. And from the naked eye, what we were looking at was not imminent, you know, it wasn't urgent. Until we got inside and we discovered it was urgent. So we keep referring to, or I keep hearing that, how do we stop this from happening again? And that you weren't on top of this early enough? This is just a really unique situation, and you're dealing with a 100-year-old chimney, and no one knew to go inside. And once he went inside, that's where he got the photos, where you can see the light through it. That's where he saw the cracks going up and down the chimney that are in such disrepair. That's where he saw things crumbling. He saw rusted beams. So I don't think there's any blame. I think that what we have to look at is the unique situation we have at hand, and then we have to deal with the liability. And to me, that's it in a nutshell, and I don't want to be liable. And even if you go all the way down and you leave a portion of it, which we really haven't talked much about that, but it's just really not feasible itself. Because I'm just going to read this to you. Hold on a second, I got to get my glasses on. It says that although the size of the concrete lintel outside the chimney is significant, it does not appear to extend under the round region of the radial brick wall. Therefore, the concrete lintel is not properly transferring overturning loads from the above opening to the pilaster walls at the sides of the opening. And if you look at the picture there, we're talking about that area again that looks like bricks on the side on the roof level. That's what we're talking about. And he says, "Should the original intel beams fall, buckle, under compression from overturning loads, the added wooden members will not prevent the chimney from leaning. Without any calculation showing the accurate condition of the original lintel beam and overturning loads can safely be transferred around the opening, the shoring system should be deemed inadequate." That is all down on the roof line. And that is not stable. And that's all, that all was found on the inside of the chimney, not the outside. So that's just, yes.
I mean, to be fair, I don't want to get hit by a brick from 22 feet or from 110 feet, right? So I think that suggestion to take key part of the chimney, that was us kind of just figuring out, hey, what's an option, right? So I think that's kind of where that came from. I believe it's understood by everybody on city council that there is still a risk of collapse of some sort if you keep a significant part of it there.
Yes. Anyone else?
When you hired the engineer, what was the question that you asked the engineer? What were you seeking to find out from them?
When I hired the engineer, what were the questions that I asked? Well, as I talked to him, I said the outside needs repair. And the mortar, the repair job that was done on it before was done very poorly, if you read the report. So the mortar was starting to loosen in areas, and the brick was starting to crumble on the outside. So I said, and you needed a report just for that, for me to repair the outside. So that was how I started with him. And then he said, well, we have to talk about a lot more than just that. We have to talk about what's going on inside. And that was how we got on the whole subject of it. He said, you can't even judge the chimney until you do that. So my, when I went to him initially, it was to repair the chimney. And that was all. And then, and I knew that some of the bricks were, you know, the mortar was coming out around some of the bricks, you know, on the stack. So it evolved from there. He started asking me more and more questions, and then he told me his expertise, and I said, well, I'd like you to do a report on it. So that was how it came about. But I talked to a couple other engineers who said they didn't want to do it.
The report was a general assessment of what the condition of the chimney, right?
What was a general assessment of the condition of the chimney?
Yes. Is that what I'm understanding?
That it's not structurally sound.
Right. That's what the report was, that the engineer was tasked to give you an assessment of the condition of the chimney, right? So in hearing the discussion, I feel the same way that I did last week, as far as wanting to hear more information and asking an engineer the question, what will it take to restore it? Exploring that option, because it doesn't sound like we have that information. I understand that we all can speculate and say it's going to be a lot of money. We understand that, labor and material. But we haven't done our due diligence in exploring that, and I'd like to know if that's a possibility.
If he thought it was, could be repaired, he would have put that in his report. He knew that that was what I initially had asked him to do, or, you know, mentioned him that I needed to do. But by the time he got done, he said, no, it's not structurally sound. It needs to come down.
So anything can be repaired, right? I mean, we discussed that last week, but...
No.
Or rebuilt. Anything can be rebuilt, sorry.
Demolished and reconstructed.
Right. Is basically what you're talking about. You're not talking about repairing that chimney. And, you know, you have to remember that somebody, it has to be repaired on the inside, too. How do you go up in the inside of a pitch-black chimney and get up as it narrows? How are you going to get a guy up there to do, it's, I mean, I don't know anyone with construction or...
You don't. You tear it down, and then you build it back up.
Right. You can't do it.
And I guess I'm still feeling the way where I'd like to get more information about it. The reason why I'm thinking this way is because we have a Historic Preservation Commission, right? We have it for a reason. History is something we value in this town. Batavia is out of the Tri-Cities, the oldest, 1833. And that means something to this town. I understand that, I understand the situation that we're in right now, and I understand it's not economically feasible and all those things. But I'm also hearing that there are some possibilities where there's funding sources that could be available to... some possibilities where there's funding sources that could be available to us. Sounds like many. So I don't know, I just feel like we owe it to the town to at least find out if that's something that the town wants. You, you purchased a historical property, right? I mean, that's something that you knew.
But the chimney is not part of that. I don't, Zach, how is, how is the chimney classified?
Significant.
So the property as a whole is identified significant. The historic district's designation does not separately designate the chimney. So collectively, the chimney, the property, you know, the main building where the crimery was, that is Pal Joey's, Phil Elstrom's former apartment, is all classified as significant. That being said, if you want, you could scroll up and it does provide the notes to why in this, in this packet. It's near the top.
Want to go up?
Yeah, if you go all the way up to the beginning, you, you can see some of the information. It is limited on why they came to that designation, but that is the designation of the property. It's near the top all the way.
Okay.
Designation of a property including the chimney or not including the chimney?
It is encompassing the chimney. So it's, it's the property and all structures on it as a whole.
Right. So I heard the mayor mention that there was no significance to this chimney, but now I'm hearing that, you know, it's designated significant. So I just wanted to clarify that.
What I was saying was, in all the years that the history was written about Batavia, it was never covered by anybody or noted as something of significance.
Why are we considering it significant? Just want to clarify.
Part of that property.
Property, the property was significant, but, you know, there was nothing about the chimney.
So if you look at the, the limited information that from, from the Historic Preservation Commission, the property information, it's listed as limestone construction, indigenous construction. That is rationale for why the property was designated significant. The chair of the commission has requested that these be updated as we move forward, though, with more information. I just want to put that in the record.
Thanks. So I guess that's the reason why I'm feeling like we have that responsibility to just find out more information, another, another study to be done for $8,000. It's, I, I don't think that's a big ask to find out more information about this because of the significance of this property and because it's historical. We want to preserve that character, everything that's been mentioned here. How can we make an informed decision, you know, without getting more information? So I, that's how I'm feeling with this whole situation, something that our community values and we love about this town. So.
I would, I would challenge that on where are you going to find anyone more qualified? And you may say you want to, you do that and you may, you may want to try to do that. I'm just saying I would challenge that because this gentleman's qualifications, if you can surpass them, then that's great, but I don't know that you can.
Even when we do our own bids for our home, right?
Right, but I'm just saying. I'm just saying that his, his expertise is very, very good. What you're saying is that just tear it, let me take it down so that no one gets hurt. And then if you guys decide you want to fund rebuilding it, that's kind of what you said, I think. That's what you said. It's like, so why not pass for me to take it down? And then if you want to get funding to rebuild it, then we can go from there. But I want to get it down, as you said, because you can see light through it. I mean.
I feel like I would want to have an expert opinion to, to tell me that, to give me that guidance to rebuild, you know, like take down, rebuild. I mean, I can, I can think that that's a good way to go, but I'd like an expert opinion on that. It's like that.
Mary?
Just kind of looking forward with you looking at selling the properties, is you, because you encompass many different buildings along that area and everything is for sale. Is it all for sale as one group or are you willing to break it up and sell it in different parts?
It's funny because I had a discussion today about that, both. We're trying, we're marketing it as a whole and then we're marketing them individually.
I will express to council here is, and I know that I can't sit there and say, this is what we want you to do, but my preference would be to sell it in smaller pieces. I worry that if we sell it as one, or if you sell it as one big group, then we're, it's going to be a big developer that's going to want to come in and razz everything down. And if there are things that we want to salvage with some of those significant properties, I think that's something that, you know, we're kind of expressing to you, but I'm just letting you know that that's just kind of what's going through my head on that.
She's got their hand up here. Another couple hours.
And I don't control that, so.
Andrea, do you?
Yeah, I would just like to make a comment regarding the validity of the engineer's report. I'm a licensed engineer. I go out for RFPs all the time for the city. We asked to submit their qualifications and we might get a few, but based on the qualifications that the owner has presented tonight and last week at the COW, that person would have been up at the top of my list for picking. Based on the years of experience, the amount of structures they've done, I don't really think it's necessary to go out and have them spend more money to get a second opinion. I think that based on those qualifications that have been presented would have been my choice. Or again, up there at the top. So that's just kind of how we look at things with experience and project types and that they've specialized in chimney inspections. I, I think that stands enough for itself. And that's just someone that does this on a daily basis.
Stoffa?
I also would point out, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, the Batavia Historic Commission's been bandied about and talked about. They agreed with the recommendation for demolition of the structure. Am I correct on that?
No, they recommended 22 feet, seven inches.
They agreed with the recommendation for the demolition of the structure?
They recommended down to 22 feet, seven inches. So it is a partial demolition.
Not the full demolition we're voting on now.
Which is an arbitrary decision based on.
No, it's based on the internal lining of the.
No, it was based on the planning commission deciding that. It wasn't based on the engineer's report.
It wasn't based on the engineer's report.
So the, the historic preservation and their consideration reviewed the report. They reviewed their standards of the, with, you know, for the commission and the Department of Interior. And they felt that through the demolition of a significant portion would allow the, the restoration of the remaining portion to, to remain with a reduced liability or issue for, you know, structural issues to keep perpetuating. That was their opinion. That was based on discussion among the members and with the one member from the public that did participate. And that is a recommendation to the city council. However, city council is the final decision maker on this matter.
Question for information, when we say 22 feet, is that above the roof line or above the base?
So it's, so when measuring on, on the cross section, it is to 22 feet, seven inches as marked on that cross section. That's, so that is essentially 11 feet above roof line.
Okay.
So that is how the measurements are shown in that cross section.
Yeah.
So it would be consistent with the top of inner liner wall at 22 feet, seven inches. So that was the HPC recommendation. Again, the city council is the final decision-making body on this.
You know. Wait, Jim's been.
Whoever.
Here we are again. So a couple of things. So first off, we've invested an absurd amount of money in the River Street and, and we have largely vacant storefronts there now, right? We have one, another big vacant storefront coming as well, right? We have to get some of these properties moved, quite frankly, to either new owners or to whatever, so we can get new tenants in. The chimney is 110 feet tall. It is dilapidated. It's been called structurally unsound. I did ask Scott about getting another assessment done prior to this meeting and he came back and mentioned you spend $8,000 for it. I feel like we'd spend, and Scott agreed, we probably would, would get the same result. I think it wouldn't necessarily change if we got a second opinion on it. But the point is, this thing is structurally unsound, does need to come down. If at a later date, after the property is sold and has a new owner, if we say if it's at the city, we want to invest additional money to get us some sort of smokestack back, maybe a smokestack back that's actually native to the original building, like square with the crown on top and all that stuff, maybe that's an option, right? That way, we're actually true to the spirit of the original building, number one. Secondly, we've moved the property to an owner who's better capitalized, maybe get additional tenants in there. And third, we're moving on River Street. I will caution, back to the point made during the last discussion, our track record for maintaining both properties and gambling licenses and liquor licenses, I mean, it not necessarily is a deal. I'm just going to look at the tin shop. Tin shops, stood there abandoned for seven years, right across from this property ironically. Yeah. And not only was it abandoned, we had known water damage. Everyone just kind of let it fall over, right? And the only reason why it was even called significant was because when they were taking off the asbestos siding, they found an old sign. That's all it took. They found an old sign and they said, okay, now this is significant, right? And so there it sat abandoned for six or seven years, right? So my, my concern is that based on our track record, we pause on this, you know what happens? That building stays abandoned for another five, six years and, and we have a bunch of nets underneath the smokestack because we, because we're worried about liability. Based on our track record, that's a, that's a legitimate concern. So.
Coleman?
Yeah. So on this particular smokestack, I, I think that given the grants that have been pointed out to us, repairing, restoring, rebuilding, that the 22-7 is something that we wouldn't just be the city, could also be nonprofits, could also be the community. But I've put that idea out there. I'm not going to, you know, waste too much more time on that. As to it being native to the building, it's from 1910. We're not talking about it was built in the 80s, right? I don't think we need to tell ourselves a story that this isn't historically significant to also feel okay to tear it down. Historically significant things need to come down sometimes. And I think it's okay for us all to give ourselves a permission structure to say, a 1910 cooled smokestack has to come down. I don't happen to believe that, but when we're going back and forth about it not being native to the building or it not having historical significance, I mean, it doesn't take much to, to see right through that. And I'm, I'm now building a little bit ahead of steam and I want to go to the one point that I meant to bring up last time, but, but I forgot and I was reminded of it here. I'm hearing the owner speak, hearing some other folks speak. I do not believe that this is a blameless situation. I believe very strongly that this is not a blameless situation. I believe that we as a city have failed this district time and again. As Abby spoke, we have, as Alderwoman Beck spoke, we have been tearing down buildings. We need to stop doing that. We need to provide some funding mechanisms. We need to provide some guidance. We as a council and a city failed there. The community has failed. The community, when they hear about this, they get mad, they get riled up, they come to us, they find solutions, but they're a dollar short and a day late. And, you know, it's not very political to say, but like shame on the citizens, shame on us, and with respect, shame on the property owner, right? The property owners of these buildings need to be paying attention. You're in a historic district, it comes with huge costs and huge liabilities and it's dangerous and it's scary and you, you might lose money, but that's the name of the game. So I'm a little mad. I'm a little pissed about this. I think we all, the opposite of there being no blame, I think we're all to blame. I know we asked for this. We did ask to be a little harsher on landlords. And I think that's still the appropriate route. This is an unfortunate consequence of that. And again, that's why I think we really need to have a clear system so that we can catch these problems earlier and provide the support where necessary. The last comment I'll make on this is that money follows money. If you can find one grant, it's easier to get a second one. I've worked in the nonprofit world for a very long time and if we can get one grant, we can then leverage that to find further grants, to find more money. I think that's a huge value add that the city can bring when we're making property owners. We're forcing them to keep their properties up to a certain level. We should at least give them chip and a nickel so they can get a dime. So it's, again, I'm going to be a no vote on this. I would vote to save the 22-7 if it were the case, but, I mean, shame, shame on all of us. Shame on everyone involved here.
Beck?
I do think that there are models out there of municipalities that are doing historic preservation well, with toolkits, with legislation, with enforcement, all things that we can copy and paste and do better. And I don't want to put her totally on the spot, but as we have the executive director of our local history museum, as a citizen, not as our clerk, Kate, do you have anything that you would want to add as our local history expert?
I'm going to jump behind the other podium. Sure. I'm on a different hat. Just to be really dramatic about it, I am also not representing the Depot Museum tonight. This is just Kate Garrett speaking and I, thanks Abby for giving me a chance to, to speak. I won't be long. I very much appreciate the city staff reaching out to the museum to look for some historic information about the property so that we could make the best informed decision possible. I will say, once you lose your history, a monument does not replace it. It is a part of the historic fabric of the community and tearing it down and putting something else up instead is absolutely a possibility. It is not the same thing. It's just not. Once it's gone, it's, it's gone forever. And it is part of the landscape of our downtown. I do think it's really iconic and I'd love to see a way that we can save it. That's all.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I was going to say, it seems like everybody's spoken and I'll make a motion at this point in time to approve ordinance 2025-068 Certificate of Appropriateness for Chimney Demolition at 25-31 North River Street, dash CD.
Motion second. Kirk, call the roll.
Stoffa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
No.
Peeper?
Aye.
Ferenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
No.
Wolf?
Aye.
11 yes, 3 no.
Motion approved. Moving to 96, Resolution 2025-139R, purchase of a Zoll refurbishing cardiac X-series monitor defibrillator. Chief, you got this one?
Before chief, I wasn't here for the discussion the other day, so.
Yeah, it's fine. This is just a request to purchase a refurbished cardiac X-series monitor defibrillator from Zoll Manufacturing. It's the same one that we use presently in the fire department for both our ALS fire engines and also within Tri-City ambulances, for all the ambulances. So it's compatible with our existing equipment. Purpose, purpose of the purchase is, it's in this year's budget to buy the equipment and things for the ALS squad that we're looking to put into place next year. So to break up the purchase is over basically three budget periods. That was the reason for this. If you have any questions.
One, just one quick one. As a refurbished unit, what, what's an unrefurbished or a new, a brand new unit cost? Is it significant savings?
Yeah, it's, it's less than half.
Oh, really?
Of the savings, yeah. New monitor, depending on which one you decide to go with, right now it's about 70,000 to 80,000 without the attachments. Now, at present, the capital replacement on it is in two years and we align it with Tri-City ambulance so that we all have consistent equipments because we do work together in transferring patients and things. It's important that we use the same type of cardiac equipment. So these were purchased eight years ago in conjunction with the Tri-Cities and Tri-City ambulance. We all had uniformed equipment in the ALS aspect. The reason for the, for going with a refurbished one is then it's identical to what's already out there on the streets and stuff and we can roll it into the replacement program in hopefully two years with all the rest of the equipment. So that's why we're going with a refurbished one.
I would note that as we sit here, we are about 100 calls short yet this year of 5,000 calls to the Batavia Fire Department. And probably 75% of those are paramedic, right? Ambulance?
65% are, are, yeah, actual ambulance calls and then there's a percentage you could call accidents are.
Something we're going to need and use, this is, this is one of the pieces of equipment that we really need to have on our, on our trucks.
Yeah, I just want to make note. Yeah, I just want to make note, both for police and fire, I want to thank you guys for the longevity you get out of some of this equipment. You know, you might not notice it as the public. I mean, I sure don't. You know, everything looks brand-new, shiny, great shape, but, you know, as we peel back some of, you know, when we purchase some of this stuff and the age of some of our equipment, I think a lot of people would be very surprised at, you know, how far back some of this stuff goes, some of its, you know, 20-year-old equipment. So that's, you know, in my world and in the IT world, that's unheard of. So appreciate the hard work and making all that stuff last.
Yeah, we have an engine we still own that's now on display down at the Aurora Fire Museum, and it's only 77 years of age, but it runs perfectly.
And you can buy a Christmas ornament now for it.
Yeah, they're making it into a Christmas ornament.
Thanks, Alderman, Malay. I just have a question, as this is going to be, as you referenced, part of the ALS unit. Do we charge a different pricing for our ALS unit as opposed to our BLS basic unit? Is there a different cost that...
Yeah, there's actually four different costs, but the costs are applied through the transport system, so they actually are charged through Tri-City ambulance. There is no cost more by the fire department or billed by the fire department. It's for the actual medical service, treatment, and transport. So it's billed on the ambulance side of things.
Okay, because I'm just, you know, as, you know, is there an opportunity for us to recoup some of these costs associated with this equipment that we're purchasing kind of in a indirect way? Because obviously it goes back to Tri-Cities, correct?
That's true. We would have to be a transport agency. Right now, we just, we just start the initial treatment and care. If they're transported, then there's a follow-up cost. Sometimes there's what's called no treatment, treatment, no transport. In those cases, they sign a medical release and things. Very rarely are they on a cardiac monitor that they get released from.
Right, right.
Transport.
Okay.
That's usually in a basic life, support aspect, you know, first aid type treatment. But we don't normally bill for that, can we? We do have the ability to bill a nominal fee. I think it's up to $150, but...
Just for basic treatment at the whole...
Just treatment, no transport.
Okay.
But most of the time, that is done through the ambulance service itself, because we don't, we have not set up a billing system. We have a third-party billing system, which is contracted through Tri-City ambulance. So when we need to bill, it's actually still done through Tri-City ambulance.
Justin, thank you.
Sure.
Too bad there isn't a way, maybe at some point.
Any further questions of the chief? I didn't tell you a motion then to approve this?
I move we approve Resolution 2025-139R, purchase of Zoll refurbished cardiac X-series monitor slash defibrillator.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfi?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peever?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
14 yes, no, none, absent.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to 97, Resolution 2025-130-R, approving a contract with the Morris Group to install new equipment and to do the construction for the main substation reconfiguration in the amount of $863,375, which includes 10% contingency.
And we kind of briefly discussed this last week. This is, the main substation's located at 10 South Shemway Avenue. There's several pieces of aging equipment at their end of their useful life, including some oil circuit breakers that were installed in 1979. So we engaged power systems engineering to basically redesign the substation, and after they got essentially the plans of what needed to be done, we needed to send out for bids to get the construction work to demolish the old equipment, rebuild the substation. It went out, it was, there's bids that were solicited, we got three. One of them looked too good to be true, and it was. That's why it was the cheapest. It didn't have everything that we needed to be done. And then between the other two, one was considerably more. The other one was for $784,887 from the Morris Group. It covered everything that we needed in terms of the quote for the specification requirements. It is a bit over, with the 10% contingency, it's a bit over budget, but you can cover the balance, which is $88,375 from the general capital supplies account, which still has 600 grand in it. So even though it's a little bit over budget, we got money set aside at our places to cover something like this. Needs to be done. It's our main substation. We need to rebuild things in order to keep electricity going.
You did an amazing job. Thank you. The only thing I would add is that it adds and works on the resiliency that we're looking for, for the electric utility. So with that, you know, the equipment aging out makes me feel super old, because that was the year I was born, and Erica and I were talking, I'm like, man, but I'm still functioning, but equipment just doesn't last that long. So as soon as the new year rolls around, we'll start working on this to get this going and all the parts replaced, so it's up and running before the summer heat. And throughout the project, we'll have some on-street parking blocked off, where we have a gate there across from the gym, and then there might be some additional times on the path, just interim delays or to get cranes in there to get the equipment. But otherwise, hoping to get it completed in about five months.
Questions, concerns, comments, anybody? Alderman Beck?
This substation has always taken up such a huge footprint of our downtown river frontage in one of the prettiest spots in town. This might be a dumb question, because I don't know what all goes into it, but as these things are reconstructed, has there ever been talks about relocating or shifting or consolidating or just at least a bit more of our river frontage?
I don't know that that has been done. I know there's a lot of infrastructure that goes directly here, so that would be quite a large undertaking, and it might be cost prohibitive when we're looking at doing a bunch of other things like resiliency and underground. So we'd have to do an analysis just to see where that is.
Any else have a question?
I was going to ask if the footprint was going to shrink at all, but it doesn't sound like it from what I read.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't believe that it is, that we're going to be putting in concrete bases in some of the areas. There's a little bit of room inside the gate now, but I don't imagine it's going to be that much less.
Do these new substations last as long as the old ones? Can we expect a good long time out of this one?
You know, that's a good question. I would anticipate that as stuff goes on, and I'm learning some of this stuff, so these are questions that I will definitely bring back to Steve and Erica. But yes, I think that there's enhancements in technology and stuff, but again, we also tend to see with technology, there's more abilities for things to fault and stuff like that. So our hope is to have it last. Right now, it's a little under 50 years old, so we hope we get another 50 to 75.
I think we need a motion.
Yeah, so this is our main substation. We need the work done, so I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-130R, approving a contract with the Morris Group to rebuild the main substation for the main substation reconfiguration project in the amount of $863,375, which includes a 10% contingency.
Second. Motion in second. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Solfi?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peever?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
14 yes, no, none, absent.
Motion approved. All right, the administrators' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. The first is that on next Tuesday, December 9th, we are hosting a meeting here at 6:00 PM to talk about planning for Batavia's energy future. We have a draft of our Integrated Resource Plan, our IRP, and the purpose of the meeting is to go over that preliminary report in summary and then also to receive comments and questions from the public about that plan so that we can incorporate those and bring those back to U.S. City Council to consider before we move on to other aspects of what we hired Braddell Group to do. The next steps are, and they are really in the midst of, conducting the resilience study, looking at our existing infrastructure and also any anticipated infrastructure that is part of the IRP. And that will lead into a cost of service study and then also be incorporated into the final portion of the project, which is the rate design, so that we make sure that the rates we're collecting support the future plans for the costs of providing our service and keeping our system resilient. So please join us December 9th at 6:00 PM here in city council chambers immediately before next Tuesday's Committee of the Whole Meeting. And also at the next city council meeting on December 15th, that will have the budget on, the budget resolution will be on that agenda, as well as the tax levy and the SSA levies. With the other two discussions that we had tonight, we couldn't really cease beginning those discussions. And also with the short week, and we had a number of people out on vacations, we had at first intended for it to be on December 1st, but it ended up needing to get moved to the December 15th agenda. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Have any project status?
That was, that was kind of it, just to talk about those upcoming things.
Other business?
Nope. There was, Jim, did you want to make your recommendation?
Yeah, I just had, given all the changes at River Street, including what we learned during our last session, I think we owe it to ourselves and to the public to have a holistic just kind of review of all things River Street and just focus on River Street. The intention would be some, to some point in January or whenever space frees up on schedule, and during one of the Committee of the Whole meetings, and, you know, invite the public, and let's just talk about the whole thing end to end, everything from, you know, vacancies to old buildings to RFPs we have going on, to just all the good stuff and the bad stuff. Let's just cover it all for people.
I support that.
Yeah, I would also support that. Could I also just request that the Historic Preservation Commission show up too, to kind of just fill us in on what is it they do, what they're looking at, you know, kind of get an idea of how they're interfacing with River Street as well, since they're such an important player.
Last thing, one thing I just want to say is there's a lot of online chatter about leaf pickup. There's no more leaf pickup. You can put it in bags if you can get it out through the snow, and it will be picked up for free during December. And then there's been a lot of chatter about brush pickup. If you knock all the snow off your brush, it starts on the 3rd, because it got delayed due to the snowstorm, for one last pickup on both sides of town.
Thank you very much.
But that's the claw, not the vacuum.
Yeah.
Your Honor?
Can I just make one more comment? To Alderman person, Farenbach's request, which I totally support, I like what you said, like to talk about the good, the bad, the ugly, everything in between, and I just think we just need to embrace that a little bit more, like staff to council, council like to staff. Like, we like to focus on the good, but sometimes we really have to focus on the bad too, and the ugly and the things that aren't working. And when you, when staff brings that to us, we don't think less of you, staff. Like, we want, like, it helps us make better decisions. And so, like, don't be afraid to bring the uncomfortable things to us also. So totally support that. And also, I think Alderman Beck brought this up earlier about how other communities are doing historical preservation really well, and we should look into that and kind of copy and paste, and we don't have to recreate the wheel. So let us know how we can help assist doing that also.
I wanted to add regarding the IRP, there's also a community group called Bright Future Batavia. They met in November at the library, and they're having another meeting in December, on December 4th, so this Thursday, right? This Thursday at 6:30 to talk about the IRP plan. At the last meeting, Max was there from the city, so maybe, is he, do you know if he's going to come to this one as well?
I can ask him and see if he can attend.
Justin and I were there, and he was informative. So if the community is listening and they want to ask questions about it, it was a good way to understand it.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the Masses, the mayor's report, and I'm just going to say very quickly that I am very, very pleased with the work that was done over the Thanksgiving holiday with the work by the city employees to get all of the snow and everything else that was flying around. And this includes the fire, the police, the Public Works did a phenomenal job. And we got a new Public Works Director, and it just, everything just kind of fell into place. So I really thank all those involved, the really, I had several people, many times after a big snow, I'll get some complaints thrown at me about, oh, they didn't do my street right, or they didn't get here, or whatever. I haven't heard that yet. I've heard nothing but nice things being said about a very overwhelming snowstorm that was handled in the very, very, very highest of order.